You're all set to meet, huh? All right, I'm gonna call this meeting of the select board to order. It is August 23rd, it is 6 o'clock.
Six thirty.
Six thirty? I'm looking at the agenda. You got that. It is 6:30. And first is, if I can get a motion to waive the...
Flag.
I'm sorry? Not till we do the Zoom.
A motion to waive the reading of the Zoom requires us.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Wait man.
All right, we're gonna do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have a little bit of delay on some of our materials, but before we get started, I actually asked Jonathan Miller, if you want to stand up, to come by. As you know, we did a proclamation for the Little League Champions and all of our players, baseball and softball, and we had an opportunity to recognize the players and the coaches. And I wanted to recognize Jonathan for his leadership as the president, especially during such a difficult time. So, on behalf of the board, oops, myself, I just wanna give you a token of appreciation and thank you from the community for all your hard work and success with our youth. We appreciate it. So, thank you very much. All right, so... Did everybody have an opportunity to read the minutes before?
I did.
Are we good with the minutes?
Yes, I agree.
Most are accepted minutes as written.
Okay, and do I have a second?
Wait in seconds.
Okay, you have one favor?
Clock eye.
Aye.
The Noid eye.
Waitman eye.
Nick's eye, okay. Uh, we'll wait on the warrant, if that's okay? Uh, public comment. Do we have anybody to make it for public comment? Okay. All right, oops. First thing up, we'll just wait one second while you just kinda get through it up. This would happen when you give your time administrator vacation.
Same way up, just waiting for the meeting, then I lost track of time. Hold on to that thing there. Yeah, that's mine. That was given to me earlier. That's a handle desk.
Is that mine?
I put mine in here. Okay, I'm sitting in my office.
All right, you guys wanna go back to the warrant?
Yep. Make a motion to Treasury warrant 22-74 and payroll 22-PW.
And do I have a second?
Wait in seconds.
All right, roll call vote?
Clock eye.
The Noid eye.
City eye.
Waitman eye.
And Nick's eye excluding any COA wages? All right. Next on the agenda is open a public hearing for Lilac Hedge Farms' application for two common particular licenses. Close pub...okay, so, if I can have a motion to open the hearing?
Open the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of opening the hearing?
Aye.
Waitman eye.
Clock eye.
All right. So, all right. You want to, you wanna come up? You, you wanna present?
Um, I wrote down a few things, yeah.
Okay.
Should I just stand where I aim in, or...
Whatever you're comfortable with. You can either come in front or stand there, or they can hear you wherever you are.
Where would you prefer to be?
Whenever you're comfortable.
You're tall, so we can see you.
What was that?
You're tall, so we can see you there.
All right, hello and thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. My name is Ryan McKay and I own Lilac Hedge Farm. I started the farm 10 years ago while in college at UMass Amherst. While we might seem new to Rutland, I actually purchased the home farm on Bond Road six years ago, which is partially in Rutland as well. Our farm raises beef, pork, lamb, chicken, turkey, and duck, which we retail through 14 farmers markets a week, various wholesale accounts and local farm stands, as well as an extensive home delivery service. Today, we own over 400 acres between Holden and Rutland and manage an additional 100 acres of rented crop ground in the surrounding towns. Our home delivery business has been the backbone of our business for the last two years. When COVID hit, we were still in our infancy and were able to expand our product offerings, partnering with many of our farmer friends to offer local produce, cheese, and much more in additions to the meat we raise. Pre-COVID, we had planned to open a very similar vision to what we have now constructed on the Rutland farm. In 2019, we received from the town of Holden license, licensing to operate a farm stand, ice cream restaurant, and beer garden on our land along Main Street in Holden. We've been leasing the land from the former...we have been leasing the land of the former Heifer International Farm since shortly after they closed. Last summer, the Williams family asked if we would have any interest in the remaining land and buildings that Heifer owned and made the introduction for us. After many months of back and forth, threats of auctions, and probably a small act of God, we were able to close on the farm and 45 acres in December. While very diff...while very difficult being able to preserve this farm has been a great deal to me. I spent many field trips visiting with my forage club as a kid, and having spent the last three years leasing the fields for hay and sheep, I developed a strong appreciation for the view, surroundings, and the long history this farm has in Rutland. I was determined it was destined for more than house lots. Sorry, my paper got wet. Uh, the opportunity to purchase Heifer is allowing us to expand our business and achieve our two primary goals. These are to develop a farm which we can invite our community to, to enjoy and learn in Rutland, as well as continuing to expand the production side of our business at the home farm. Over the last six months, we have built a brand-new hog barn to house our pork production in the winter months, as well as a packing house to allow us to continue to expand our retail meat side of the business at home. We are fortunate for our community's support over the last six years and for it to be successful enough to allow us to fund this next step in our farm, being Lilac Hedges overlook. I'm confident we have the right team in place to make this happen and help continue to evolve our farm over the coming years. Um, at this time, I'd like to introduce Heidi Cooper, our general manager of the Rutland farm, to continue to speak a little bit more on our vision.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. Um, so first, I'm gonna start with a little bit about the business and the paperwork that you have here in front of you to do a brief overview. So, the store itself, we are very fortunate, was able to open this past weekend for the first time. It's providing a convenient location for our customers and the local community to shop for those products that we carry and the things we're bringing in within our store. The most important thing that we are selling is our meat. It's the backbone of our business, as Ryan had mentioned those items to you. In addition to that, we are carrying products from over 100 farmers and producers in New England. Eighty-five percent of those are within Massachusetts alone. Um, so that is the store portion. The ice cream, uh, we are very excited to move forward with. We will be exclusively scraping, scrape, scooping, excuse me, Maple Valley Creamery's ice cream. We do have future plans of perhaps doing some making our own. That's actually something we previously had done. Um, in 2019, we ran a successful ice cream stand in North Borough, um, and then, of course, last year, things had happened, but so we're very much looking forward to bringing that back here into Rutland, into this operation. Um, and then, of course, the bar portion that we'll discuss that is in here is very heavily based on Massachusetts relationships. Um, we'll be pouring a number of different things, but some of the main ones that we're excited to have an established relationship with and have already discussed, some of the components of the ag relationships and teaching people a bit more about farm-to-glass, as that is a popular thing now. Um, you know, places like Carlson Orchards for their hard cider, Agronomy for their wines, Four Star and Stone Cow for their beers, and Bully Boy Distillers out of Boston for their spirits. So, things like that are what we're very much looking forward to featuring. Um, a little bit about me and my husband, who are both managers at Lilac, so we have some confidence in our ability to pull this off and make sure that it is indeed an asset to the town. Um, I did not grow up on a farm, but I can tell you 100% that it's my calling. I've worked in produce, in meat, in CSAs, and most recently, food distribution, which is where I created the relationships that have made it able for us to bring in all of these other products and the businesses that we're supporting and on this property in Rutland. Uh, my husband was born and raised on a local dairy farm. He ran and partnered it, um, and then luckily enough, three years ago, was able to join the team with Lilac Hedge and become a livestock and farm manager for Ryan. Um, I just joined one year ago myself, when the opportunity presented itself and was able to secure the job, um, when he purchased this farm in Rutland, knowing that I would take over that position as general manager. Um, on the farm, I don't know if you know much about statistics for farm families, but it's pretty rare for two farm employees to only work on a farm. Um, I mean, near 90% of farm families have someone else who worked, or have someone in the family that works off the farm. Very lucky that my husband and I are able to support our three kids through Lilac alone, and this in itself is going to let us continue that. We bring them with us a lot. My daughter Ellie is here with me this evening. They're usually with us, um, but it's something they're used to and it's something they're looking forward to. And it's something I'm looking forward to because this property is the exact location that I wanna spend my weekends with my kids. So, there's a little bit of it, you know, in it for us, too. Um, so on, a little bit more about not just us, but you should know why this benefits Rutland. Um, and not even just Rutland, but this is all about creating a strong agricultural, um, community. We really want there to be a local farm and agricultural hub, and this is somewhere that we can do that. We've already created some of those relationships. Oh, sorry. Um, so, Central Mass grown, I don't know if you're familiar with them, but they are, uh...should I stop?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Everybody's...
David, David! David, could you...David! He's not on there. He's on RCTV, I think.
It's back there.
No, we're RCTV.
Oh, so where's David? How can he be connected to the speaker?
That's it?
I'll go first.
I think it's over.
I can stop.
I think it's done. Sorry.
No, sorry, sorry about that.
So, by the way, no, that's...so... Um, so I'll continue, so... Or should I wait? Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Just to make sure we don't have any more. It sounded like David. It was David McKay, McKay speaking about something. Actually, I thought he was on the screen, but he's not, so...
Oh, sorry, don't know.
I have no idea where it could have come from. Well, I apologize if you wanna continue. Hopefully, we'll...
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Um, so, with a lot of the vision that we have for, you know, providing this strong agricultural community in central Massachusetts, um, we're happy to report Central Mass grown, which is the premier, like, local food nonprofit. They do education and promotion. They're actually renting space from us on the property, um, and have a lot of plans for their events and things that they'll be doing with us. Actually, on Friday, we're hosting a farm tour that they do annually, so we're inviting the commissioner of agriculture, the assistant commissioner, and those folks to come see the property. Um, we've worked with them for many things, but not necessarily on this property itself, so we'll be opening that up to them. Uh, we've already done things now with the Rutland Agricultural Commission. Worcester County Conservation District is doing workshop, or is planning to do workshops and things on the farm, and then also Worcester County Farm Bureau. So, a lot of the, you know, main stakeholders in the agricultural committee are very interested in being a part of this with us, so we're looking forward to that. And of course, it goes without saying, over the farm, the nonprofit that is working with us on the property. Um, I've been very fortunate to meet their new executive director, Jamie. She's fantastic. Um, they have so many plans for this fall, and they just had their annual meeting. So, with all of that, them trying to plan their fundraising, everything they have coming, I'm very much looking forward to what we can have onsite established to help them reach their goals as well. Um, so with that, um, in terms of economic development and things that it benefits for Rutland as well, our capacity to host events, full-scale events and things like that, um, like we've already talked about what we'll be doing for the tricentennial for next year, um, on the farm. So, things like that are very important to us, giving back to the community and making sure that folks know this is open to everyone to come spend their time. Planted a pumpkin patch. Ryan and I are not vegetable farmers, but I think we did a pretty good job, so we'll be able to do fall events this year. Um, already, we've, you know, reached, schools have reached out. We have a corporate event that reached out about spending time on the farm, um, Cub Scouts and that, you know, the Lions Club, things like that have reached out. So, um, I just, I really think that this is something overall, that we can provide a lot to the town. Our first weekend in the store, we saw, saw over 400 people. The number of people asking about jobs was incred...I mean, a lot of it was asking, you know, for their high school, things like that, but moving forward specifically with the ice cream and looking into the alcohol, we're going to be at least doubling our jobs from what we provide to the local community now, um, so we're very much looking forward to that as well. But I think we welcome any questions, comments, thoughts you might have.
Thank you. Does anybody from the board have any questions at this point? Carol and I did have an opportunity when we, um, attended the ag commission meeting at Lilac Hedge to, um, just take a quick tour around with Ryan. He did offer that to anybody on the board that was interested in just seeing the layout of the farm and some of the things that they're looking to do. Um, so, thank you for that. We appreciated the opportunity. So, it's, it's much easier for us to, um, visualize exactly some of the things that they're looking to do. Um, and we did have a meeting with, um, the planner and the building inspector and have received comments on most departments and groups, um, as far as their support of the project. Does anybody else on the board have any...
Any of the board members first before I comment?
Okay.
First, I wanna thank Ryan and Heidi. They've done a great job in working with our various department heads, uh, both the building inspector, town planner, and with my office in particular on the liquor stuff. So, uh, we appreciate very much the cooperation, and there's been a real effort to help move the project forward from my team, so I appreciate the work they're doing with you guys. Uh, it's my understanding that they're gonna be looking for two separate common vics tonight. One is gonna be for the retail establishment, um, the ice cream, and I guess just the restroom area. And then, the second one will be...that, that's all set in terms of the billing permit? That's all approved? It's ready to go? So, they're, everybody's completely comfortable to do that common vic tonight? The second part of this is the pavilion and the food service. Um, that's the second part. It's such a separate, um, common vic license, and that deals with the alcohol part of this component. Uh, while there's no billing permit in place yet, the way the common vic would be drafted or is drafted, and you guys have copies of those two common vics, they're drafted in such a way that they cannot open until, they can't get their common vics effectively until all the departments approve them. So, the building department, the health department, all has to approve them. Uh, I had a meeting today with both Davids, uh, to discuss this project. Both of them are comfortable that if in any way they tried to open, because they don't have a billing permit, they would be immediately closed down. So, they, they recognize that. There's been that conversation. So, everything is, in terms of the second component of this, the liquor permit and all this, they need, as I understand this from my meeting today, is they need it to go through the ABCC to get their final liquor permit. So, our departments are comfortable allowing this to move forward because we feel that if anything went sideways, that we would have the ability to stop it immediately. Uh, we really believe, and, and we're not speaking to approve or, you know, deny this thing, but we do think we have controls in place to manage this process as it goes forward. Uh, so there would be, Mr. Chairman, there would be, if you get, if you choose to move forward, there would be two motions. So, it'd be separate motions for each of the two common vics. Uh, both of those motions will be continued, obviously. The first one's not so much if you just do the retail ice cream. Is, is, I guess they, they're already got their billing permit or they're close to getting their billing permit. Uh, so, we'll just say they would both be contingent upon them meeting all the requirements of the building and health departments and fire departments, and the fire inspection. So, uh, it's clearly the board's decision to move forward, but we're comfortable that we're in a position that we can manage it if, if that need be. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments before we close the, the hearing? Thank you both for your presentations. Uh, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
You're all moved.
For a second? Roll call?
Clock eye.
The Noid eye.
City eye.
Waitman eye.
And Nick's eye. All right, next is regarding the actual approval of the two different licenses.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. The first common vic is, is approved. On the other paperwork on file, we have a copy of all permits.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, it's pretty comprehensive, so go ahead and, uh, make a motion to approve the first common, uh, vicular license.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Any, uh, comments?
Just for clarification, this is the, um, ice, the farm, retail farm stand and ice cream sales.
Yes, yep. It's a CV 21-2. All right, can I have a roll call?
Clock eye.
The Noid eye.
City eye.
Waitman eye.
And Nick's eye? All right, and we can, uh, look at the next license request, which is the alcohol beverages.
I guess my question is, why are we approving this now if this hasn't gone to the state for approval?
So, to you, Mr. Chairman. So, in the discussion they had today with everybody, um, they felt that they didn't wanna hold them up. They wanna move, I think they wanna have this done by Labor Day, is their plan in terms of getting everything up and running, uh, is my understanding. So, they wanna get everything ready. They gotta get the ABCC approval, but they don't wanna be held up for weeks just sitting around waiting for the common vic approval. And since we're comfortable that we can, they will not be able to open without the billing permit and other kind of things, we were okay with allowing that. It's really more of a timing issue, as I understand it.
What I would say on that is it needs to go in front of the board of selectmen before ABCC entertains it.
Yes, yep. The first, right. So, so Carol and I did have discussions with, um, with, uh, both the Davids and stuff regarding, um, their support and concerns, and they feel they're comfortable with the restrictions until things are all in place, that things would be in order, so... Um, and, and they did make clear that they did need this to help move the process forward.
Okay.
I have a quick, sorry, I have another question quick, sorry. Looking at the common vic license, it just says that the picnic table seating, basically, an unknown number of people with a total roughly unknown square footage. Um, is there ballparks? Like, is, I would assume that that should be known already?
That's, that's right. When the fire departments kinda come out and probably set those protocols.
Well, that, well, Seth's been out there, and it's an open...
Right, but I'm just wondering why on the license that it's not, that those details are filled in.
Did, did that get answered in our email, Carol? Cause we had asked about the maximal, maximum capacity. Ryan, could, do you, can you speak on what the...
Uh, you, you were correct in the fact that it does get set by the fire, so they're basically letting us know how many we can have under the pavilion area. And then, it's also pretty hard because with outdoor picnic tables, I mean, the real focus of this is an open-air outdoor pavilion, so, um, underneath, we can kinda take a guess, but we were kinda waiting on fire to give us the final amount of this is how many you can fit under the, the covered pavilion area.
Yeah, I guess I just was, do you have a rough idea of what the co, the pavilion air square footage is? Cause that's not even included in the permit, just size-wise.
That should be on the maps. Uh, there, there was a couple pages.
Right, but that's just, it's not on the, on the...
If I had to guess, the, the amount of people under that area, 100? Oh, 99, sorry.
I think Lee is asking, like, what the square footage is, right?
I'm asking both, what the, what the, um, capacity, which I understand...
Square footage, it should be like five pages of the layouts. I don't have it on the, I can...
No, that, it's just not included. I guess my question more is for our board, why it wasn't included in the license that were... It just says XXX number of people totaling roughly XXX square foot, feet.
Can I kinda, um, cause the, we did one of these before, um, obviously with milk room. I mean, there was some, there's obviously some language that Seth would, like, happens to, like, I've seen, whatever that is, triggers different regulations and stuff. So, it's my understanding that he would come out to you and work that out.
Correct, yes.
And make sure that you're under a certain limit because, so you don't have to incur separate...
Yeah, he's been out quite a few times, and what kinda basically the reason of the open-air pavilion is, was why we're going with that. And as far as the question as to why it's not on there, I'm not quite sure. I mean, we had some...
I know that, I know Beth did type this up, so maybe we could put a contingent on signing after Seth has determined a number and a, and a square footage.
It doesn't bother me as much because it's my guess that Seth and you were gonna work that out, and then we're gonna have those details. So, my understanding would be that it was just not put on there as a placeholder.
But if you wanna get it put on, maybe we could say, continue before signing, we'll get a number.
I'm okay just not putting any, I just am confused as to, especially the square foot. I can understand occupancy is going to have other considerations, but the square foot of the pavilion, I assume would be defined. I mean, we have it based on the plan, so...
So, somebody could make a motion with those, those figures being added to prior to signing, the board signing.
I mean, how's the board feel? Right.
No, I agree. I'm not quite sure, um, why bother putting the X's in if we didn't have the numbers, especially in numbers...
So, to you, Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't believe that this certificate, even though you're signing, is gonna be given to them with a lot of difficulty and everything is set up, and those numbers are in there. This is to sign, give, basically get the approval of you for the process and what we're doing, but those numbers, they're not just gonna get the common vic now. It's gonna be, it's all approved, it's all set, but it's subject to the billing code and everything being met anyway, so...
Right, but it's here for signature, right?
Yeah, but it's...
We're talking about an administrative oversight and these people are kinda around. So, I don't wanna hold it up. I don't have paper on a sheet.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It can be completed.
Yeah, we can take care of that.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, that's basically why we're here this evening, too, because the next step of having received the same license in the town of Holden with conceptual plans, the next step is, ABCC can take quite a while. Um, we realized that from last time, and we're just trying to keep it moving forward. We're, we full well understand that we're not going to be occupying the building until we have an occupancy license. No one will be in the building. All right, bathrooms are accessible to the outside. I just, we're here for the approval of the license itself, so it can keep moving. I mean, we're, we're very close to the building being completed. Uh, we're on the same page with the building inspector, the last couple things that he's looking for to be basically written down at this point, and then, I just, we didn't wanna end up waiting to the next maintenance meeting and then a possible another month on top of that for ABCC.
Through, I guess through the chair, I view this as an oversight on our office's part, and I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve it and sign it, pending that information gets added and obviously pending ABCC approval. I don't think this should hold up or warrant any further discussion.
Well, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Uh, roll call?
Clock eye.
The Noid eye.
City eye.
Waitman eye.
Nick's eye. All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck. We look forward to seeing all the activity. Next up, we have department heads. Carrie from the library.
Aye. So, we just want a little update about what's going on.
Yeah, just, um, things that are going on, activities in the library, any concerns that we need to have immediate...
Oh, okay. So, I wrote out a few things. We recently had a building inspection. I understand there were some deficits. I'm not sure if they go along with this, cause I haven't seen Dave's report. I haven't actually spoken to him, cause I just got back from vacation. I know we had the electrician in, but I, I'd kinda like to see what he, what he saw. Have you seen any of this, Ron?
I just got back through and I haven't seen any report yet.
Okay. So, I asked Joe Buckley for the report, but he gave me this, which is different.
Yeah.
Different. It's not what Dave saw. So, okay, I need an update on that, which maybe Dave is listening. Um, also, I know there are building issues, and I'm curious as to what the plan is to address them, as is my board. But now, I'm gonna talk about, um, the summer meeting program that we have, which is hugely successful. We distributed, I'm gonna say about 40 bags of books to preschools and first graders, uh, because we couldn't really do a lot of in-house activities, so that was something that was grab-and-go bags with some books that we bought. Our friends actually contributed a great deal of money for those books, and we got the bags together with activities that would accompany the books. They were gone within 72 hours. It was amazing. Through our Facebook page, we advertise a lot of stuff, and we, our website, which I learned was not linked to the town website, and I reached out to Anita, and that is all set now. The library website is linked to the town's website. It isn't with the town website. We have a separate website, but it's linked now, so all you gotta do is click.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That was easy. That was easy. So, of the programs that we had, we had, um, a lot of people come. We had a magician, 88 children came. Henry the Juggler, there were 55 people for that, and the Toad Jam Puppet Band and Ice Cream Social, over 100 people, which is to me amazing, cause August is usually really slow attendance. But I will say, the cooperation with Recreation and Summer Fund, what brought in a ton of kids, not only to the library, beefing up our circulation, introducing a lot of kids who hadn't necessarily[1755.32] Introducing a lot of kids who hadn't necessarily been to the library, coming through the summer camp was awesome. And those kids were able to jump on some of the events that we had, which was really great. I think that the magician, there was a mob scene, but I think it was at, I think it was the Summer Fun kids at camp, it was really, really exciting.
I think we should have it noted in the minutes that jugglers and magicians get better crowds in the select board meetings.
But I think the ice cream, I have to say, the ice cream. We updated our website through the town website. Um, we have a Wildberry account, which is every two weeks, it's like a magazine that comes out. All you have to do is go to our website and you click on something and it, I think you have to give your email address. And every two weeks you will get an updated version of all of our new stuff, books, movies, everything that we have recently added. So what happens with that? People can click right to our website on that Wildberry page and they begin to reserve books that we had just done cataloging, might not even be on our shelf yet. Which is pretty awesome, I think. So a lot of people are taking full advantage of that, which is really exciting. And I wanted to talk about our volunteers because we have so many volunteers and without them, they, they make such a huge difference to us. We have a band of about, I don't know, probably ten ladies and they kind of rotate around. Some of them are very consistent and they come in on Tuesdays and they put all of our books away that have been on the shelves, that have been returned from the weekend. Which is really awesome. Do you guys have any questions, Amy?
When, when do your new hours change? Is that school?
Um, we, because I have a few staffing issues, we decided, and because of COVID, we decided that we would keep till six o'clock. So we're open Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday from ten in the morning till six. We're still putting the cut, the card out, I think it's gonna get more and more popular, more and more people do want the curbside, but people are happy to come in and browse. And Fridays we're open ten to one. It is my hope that the Saturday after Labor Day, we will open on Saturday from ten to two. And that week, that week before we open that Saturday, we're gonna be open till eight o'clock. That is my dream. On Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, we're resuming our regular hours. We'll see what happens, but that's my plan. I still have masks upstairs, mask, not necessarily a mandate, but I'm asking people to wear masks. Because I think of that utmost vulnerable population, which is the children of the age of twelve who have yet to be vaccinated. And they are some of our biggest fans upstairs, so.
Anybody have anything for Carrie?
Thanks, Carrie.
If I may.
Yeah, sure.
May I, before Carrie leaves, may I suggest, if it's okay, we take number, new item number one seventy-eight. The discussion about local government interest in the town library out of order, so that way, um, Carrie's here and I think Jean's on. I'm not sure if anyone else from the library board is on.
And does anybody have any objections to taking it out of order?
No.
Okay.
So, am I okay?
Yes.
So I just happened to hop onto the library trustees meeting a couple of weeks ago and, um, heard that they're hoping to run a, the library trustees is hoping to run kind of an education program on local government. Wait, kind of what local government is, the roles and functions of different boards and commissions, how to get involved, what town meeting is. Um, what different ballot questions mean, all of that, just strictly educational, no agenda, just get information out. Um, they were hoping that there would be support from the select board. They will be running the program as my understanding, the options, but hoping that the select board is a willing partner, um, to assist however they need. So, um, I said I would bring it before the board. I know in one of our goals and objectives, we had talked about ways to kind of, um, attract additional volunteers for boards and commissions. And thought that this might be a, and I thought that this might be a productive way to do that also. If people are better understanding of what different boards and commissions do, um, the time commitment and everything as well. So that was kind of my select word side of things, but also just knowing how dismal attendance has been at town meeting recently. Um, and any votes, you know, election days and everything, just to kind of get information out and make people feel more comfortable being an active participant in their government. Am I, did I miss anything, Jean or Carrie?
No, that's pretty much it. My board was a little disenchanted with the turnout from town meeting and the turnout from the two override votes. And we talked about how can we get people to understand how important it is that they show up and be counted and, and hear what has to be said. Because it does actually affect them. All of these things affect them, which they will all soon find out, as soon as the snow begins to fly, let's face it. So, um, we feel like, you know, we, we had Nancy and I from council on aging had kind of teamed up to do some kind of drug education in this community. Which we did have a lot of support and we did do a lot of those things, you know, try to educate the community on a lot of things. And we thought maybe, you know, some of my board members had some ideas, um, you know, like a mock town meeting of sorts. But kind of like a learning town meeting where they could ask maybe Randy Jordan, who happens to be here. Why, what the moderator does and what his role is and how, you know, what's that all about? Because I don't think a lot of people know. And I, I, I feel like they need to know and it's very important. As Tip O'Neill said, all the politics are local. And everybody's concerned about the presidential election year after year, but really it's right here in your hometown where the money is really spent that you're earning. So that's what really needs to, we need to do something.
Just one comment, Carrie, I'd, I'd be happy to make myself available to talk about any of the local government structures and go through and explain how things work as well, so. Uh, I do it in schools, so I've done a lot of it in schools, I'd be happy to, to do that with you if you, if you think that's appropriate.
Okay, I, I actually thought about, um, Mr. Kanakioli as well, who was a civics teacher at Wachusett. And I thought he might have a little insight since he does have some interest in town politics. I have yet to reach out to him, but I have thought about him.
Tim?
Carrie, there's something that Addison Redfield gave me when I first was on the planning board. It was something I think from the meeting called Town Government Primer. I don't know if you've seen that or.
One of my board members actually got that, I think it's a state document. And she actually brought it to our town meeting and we kind of were leafing through it like, whoa, this is really awesome. So yes, that's, that's really an excellent place to start, thank you very much for that.
Does anybody on the board have any questions or concerns or support?
So I don't know if we need a formal motion, I, it definitely at least was like a more.
It's, it's not in our wheelhouse.
No, I think, I think we just really were looking for your support. I believe that, I think it was Tressa who said it was really important that we have the support. Because when we're doing stuff, it, it's nice to know that we can say, yeah, oh yeah, they're with us, they're with us. So I hope you're with us, you know? I can't imagine it doing anything but benefit in all of us. And certainly the members of this community, my, the citizens who actually, what I do everything for, other people in this community.
Jean, did you have a comment?
Oh, I was just, I was just gonna reiterate what Carrie said. Like, we really like the idea of every committee and board getting involved with this. Um, like we said, like, we could have like at a, a mock town meeting where people can come and ask questions of representatives of every committee. But also, um, I suggested also something kind of like a fair at the library, like in the big room downstairs. Where each committee or board has a table and people can come in and there'll be flyers and information. And people can also learn about how they can volunteer in their community, what each committee does. Um, and we really want the target, although we want the high schoolers to be educated, we do want the voters to be educated. Like, people like me who don't know what the agricultural committee might do, you know what I mean? So, um, it would be really great to get every committee and every board involved and to help spread awareness, that's what we really want to do.
Thank you. I, I, it might be, you know, just like a, a community day too. It might be an opportunity to recognize some of the people that have been active in the community as well publicly, um, so no, um.
And I know, like I said, one of our, one of our select board goals and objectives kind of was around increasing community involvement in boards and commissions and just awareness and everything. So when I happened to hop on the meeting and heard the trustees talking about this, I was like, that actually could work really well with some of our goals and objectives. And of course, just education as to how government, local government works is always a, a good thing.
Yeah, well, we appreciate you bringing it to our attention and taking this on and I certainly support it and I don't see any objection. It seems like our board is all on board.
Excellent.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thanks, Carrie, thanks, Jean and Kathleen for hopping on too, I appreciate it.
All right, thanks, thanks.
All right, um, the director on common and aging, we had to reschedule that, so. So we'll go to the administrators' update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize for being a few minutes late and I appreciate the call since I was sitting in my office just reading the information before, everything got lost in time, so I appreciate the call. Um, a couple of things I want to discuss, um, still working to finalize the contract between us and Weston and Sampson. Uh, it's, for the most part, it's done and approved by attorneys on both sides. We are simply waiting for approval from bond counsel because we are gonna be using some money that we borrowed for capital improvements. And we want to make sure that bond counsel is fine with it, we're expecting that. Got kind of an initial answer, waiting for one more person to look at it and that should set us up for me to be able to sign it. You guys gave me the authority to sign it, so that is moving forward. Um, the great news, I think you guys saw, um, the ambulance was approved, uh, grant for an ambulance was approved. So we're gonna be able to get a new ambulance, which takes out about our five-year capital fund, uh, but it's just great news. I appreciate the, uh, fire chief moving forward on that grant and I think that's a good thing for the town. Uh, anything we can do to, to improve emergency services is always a good thing. Uh, one of the things, I sent you an email today and, and this is an issue that a lot of people in town are interested in, but it's very, very narrow. And that's the American Funds money, uh, you might have seen, uh, we originally got a check for four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, we received a, a new check for eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, zero fifty-eighty-six. Now, you gotta remember that money is very, very carefully targeted into a series of buckets that we've talked about. Um, so we can't go out and spend that on whatever we want. In particular, what we'd love to do is use it for capital items, but you can't use the money for capital items. A lot of this, uh, American Funds Act money, I think is gonna end up going towards, uh, water and sewer infrastructure projects. Because that's one of the key buckets that you can use the money for. Our team is continuing to look at these things, uh, as you know, we brought two projects before you. Uh, the road project and now tonight we'll be talking about the broadband project. There's two of our initial, uh, recommendations to the board and we're gonna be developing them more further as we go along. But I wanted you to know, it's kind of nice to know that money's in hand. We were a little bit worried about the Spectra money and how we're gonna pay for that and the timing. We don't have to worry about that anymore since we got the, this is what's called the county portion of that, of those funds. So I think that was, uh, pretty good news. Um, as you know, while I was away on vacation, we lost another D P W worker who, uh, didn't leave because he hates Rutland. He likes the job, likes everything else, he's just found a better opportunity and more money, so he's leaving. We've already posted that position, we want to get that done as quickly as possible. Um, so I think that, uh, we're gonna do our best. I also know that, um, our D P W director is working with an employee who used to work for us and trying to encourage him to come back in the water department. Uh, as you know, we already brought back one person and we're gonna be interviewing a second and potentially in discussions with a third. So we're trying to move as quickly as we can, because the quicker we get staff back there, the, the lower that cost of that entire contract will be. Um, so that's going on. Uh, I'll be meeting Thursday with my entire team of department heads going over goals and objectives and going through goals and objectives. Uh, they've established their goals and objectives and we're gonna talk about those and we're gonna share them among the team. And so how we can, uh, complete those goals and objectives, not just an individual department head, but as a team. How can each department help each other achieve those goals? I think that's gonna be really, really positive. So, um, things are going well, uh, since I got back, it's been a lot of just updating. Obviously, we had the whole common vic issue that was considerable today and I thank you, Mr. Chairman and the Vice Chairman for meeting with that. Uh, the, uh, we had a regional committee meeting and again, I appreciate the Vice Chairman, uh, on the internet update, trying to do the update. And we sent out a letter to all the people in the different departments, we're trying to lock down who actually, within each department, is the authoritative position to make changes to the website. So that has been sent out, Carol. Uh, we built a new form, uh, for, um, getting, uh, people to serve on boards and commissions. And, uh, I redid that just to make the whole process easier and standardize it so we get consistent things. Carol has been, and I don't know if she's completely done, she did a great job of making a fillable document. We're gonna tie that to our website and use that as an add-on. Um, so things are, are moving forward. Uh, I do want to set up a meeting with the library, or no, I'm sorry, not the library, the community center, uh, group that we talked about. And start that meeting and see how we should move forward with that money that was set aside for potentially a new building. So that, I'm hoping that I can start getting that done, uh, next week. Uh, I haven't talked to Beth about how many people applied so far for the Economic Development Commission. But I appreciate any members who know somebody, uh, who's excited about economic development, who's looking to, to improve economic development opportunities in town. If you have people, please recommend them so we have a good pool of tech firm, I think that's gonna be an important commission. And that's pretty much what I have tonight, Mr. Chairman. Oh, I did, um, Mitch had sent me a kind of a draft proclamation information. I, I, well, I gave it to you, that's what I gave to you tonight, I think, I don't know if I got it as far as you. Uh, but I took your language, basically put it into the other language we had. So I'm looking for you to let me know if you're okay with it. I gave everybody a copy, that was actually what I was working on before. But just let me know if you're okay with that, I'm not sure the timing of that, but it's basically your language with a few twists, um, so, yeah. Yeah, I got, you gave it, sent it over to me about five thirty, so I was kind of playing with it and we'll make it look nicer, we'll put it on a proclamation paper. But just let me know if you have any changes you need to make to that, okay?
Um, as far as the, the fillable form, Carol, that's already being utilized, right? It's already available or?
I don't know, you might know more, Tamika, I don't know if it could.
Beth was following a photo because the only copy that she had given me was PDF.
Okay.
Um, so we were trying to get the fillable form and she said she was checking on it, I had her back.
Thank you.
Um, and regarding the meeting on the goals and objectives, I mean, are they gonna go into detail of all the goals and objectives? Is it gonna be an overview and you're gonna actually meet with the department heads to go over their specific?
I have put them into a presentation format and I'm asking each department to get up and talk quickly about their goals and objectives. Because I want all the department heads to know what everybody else's goals and objectives are. Because what you'll find is you'll find that the police can often help the fire department, a D P W can help somebody. So I want to do an overview, but each of the department heads will be basically presenting their couple of goals and objectives to all the managers. And they'll be able to have a give and take in a conversation about it and see how we can help each other, uh, be successful in that, in that goal, so.
So I mean, I, I agree, it's good that all the departments kind of know, so they're all kind of on the same page. But I, I also would like to see you meet specifically with each director and get in detail as far as your expectations of, of their, as far as their work product and their, you know, confidence.
And truthfully, Mr. Chairman, some department heads, I think, did a much better job of putting their goals and objectives together than others. So I, I think it's good that each department sees what each other did and how extensive they were and what they did. So that when I have the conversation with that department head, they'll know what I'm looking at. So I think, I think this meeting will help get to what you want, which is that more detailed conversation.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that there was that one-on-one conversation.
Oh, no, it's gonna be a fun one. What I've asked for them in the goals and objectives is, some of the managers have already started, I'm working on those goals and objectives. So I put a percentage complete, so somebody might have in their goals and objective document they have, it's already thirty percent complete, others haven't started. So people are at different levels of where they, where they want to be in terms of reaching that goals and objectives. And in some, truthfully, there's some that, you know, they're all money orientated. You know, if you have a goal objective that's just about money, if you don't get the money, you can't go anywhere, right? So that's, in my opinion, that's not a valid goal and objective, because you don't have the resources to do that. So you gotta put goals and objectives that are achievable and we're gonna be talking about that as well.
Right, and then, you know, if they're working at applying for grants or finding other ways, they may not meet that goal, but as long as they're on a path to trying to get to that.
That, that's gonna be, it's gonna be a pretty long meeting. Usually my department meetings are an hour to, an hour and a half max. This is gonna be a three or four hour kind of meeting, it's gonna be a long discussion.
Does anybody else have any questions for Ron, his updates? Um, and then just a reminder, the, um, the picnic for the seniors was rescheduled from last week and it will be tomorrow, the luncheon.
Okay, okay, that's good, I'm good with that. I'll pop over and settle, so.
Everybody's aware of that?
Remind me to do that.
All right, does anybody have anything else on that? Thank you. All right, so we actually, your preparation is.
Yeah, this is full here, so I'll just read it from what I wrote and we'll have to fix that.
I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, Tim.
This is Ron, I've been, uh, on the, on the fire brigade for the September eighteenth, uh, food truck festival. And I've been working with them to secure our little portion of.
I saw the email today.
The beer tent. The question that came up that I, that I asked to him about, is there gonna be seating? Does the town providing any seating or tables like that? And the answer was no. So at this point, as far as I know, we're gonna have a festival with no place to sit or anything like that. So I didn't know if there's any, been any discussion with the D P W or anybody about what to do.
So the answer is, I have not heard any of the discussion about people where they can sit.
Okay.
I don't know what happened to last year's, I assume it's the same situation at last year. They didn't have tables last year, I assume, right?
We had a, the, the fire brigade had a bunch, had a larger tent and everything last year. We don't have that ability to do that this year, so.
The only thing is, we do have that tent that's down there existing, that's, but that's not huge. And we have the picnic tables near the pool, so there's a little bit, but not what you're talking about. I don't, there's been no discussion about tables for that.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up to you and let you know about that.
Yeah, they did sign, they did assign a couple of specific tables for, one for the three hundredth anniversary meeting, one for other departments, so there's tables for that set up. And you were asking, I think, for a design of how it's gonna be laid out and.
We got all that stuff to me, we're good.
Okay, you're all set?
I got all that stuff, I just, the, the fire brigade only has basically a tent that's gonna cover the vendors and that's it. So that's all we've got the ability to do, we don't have that eighty by forty tent anymore, it's, it's under repair.
So I, I, truthfully, I can't even think of a solution to that problem, because you're talking about part of two tables and chairs.
I just wanted to bring it up, I'm not looking for.
Yeah, let me, let me think about that, maybe one of the churches has some tables we can set up. At least get five or six four by eight tables up for people to sit down in the heat or something.
So, so Ron, are you the lead on organizing?
Yeah, I've been leading, me and David have been. Yeah, I've been leading. Me and David have been, David George has been leading on that. So we've talked with the vendor. The vendor is, is putting together the plan of where everybody's located and everything. And, and actually, they've offered, you know, I've had discussions with them about the three-hundredth anniversary committee. There's no charge to get in, but we're trying to get, if people want to donate kind of at the entrances to the three-hundredth anniversary committee, we're going to do that. So, you know, he's laying out along, mostly, I guess, as I understand, along the, call it the track around the field. Trying to line up that way is what he's doing. We've talked, we've dealt with like trash cans and trash. We're going to make sure that our dumpsters are empty by end of town hall, so people can dump at the end of the day, keep it clean. We've talked about, when he leaves, it's got to look just as he got it, so we don't want any damage to the field. He ensures me that the trucks don't do that. Public health is going to do inspections, so we're doing all of those kinds of things. But tables is a good question, because I hadn't even thought of tables. I just assumed it would be whatever they did before.
And I've already talked to Director Buckley about power, because that's sort of important. He's, he's already volunteered to tow the generator over there. From the, from the Fire Brigade's perspective, what we need for power is just the long extension cord that we can get up to the connection by the basketball field.
That small building has power to it, the one that's, that's right next to the basketball court? That small, there is power there, so you can connect there.
Yeah, that's where the breaker is, but there's also a connection that's closer to the field that's just a box. And we used that two years ago, so we'll, because the generator wouldn't start two years ago, so. And we had to go with option two, which was extension cords. It worked fine, don't get me wrong, but I, I wanted to make, make sure that was in place, at least for our vendors. I don't know what the other vendors are going to need. I wasn't doing anything with them.
I'm sorry, I don't want to take a lot, my last question. Did you talk to the guy that I've been talking to that is running the event?
The dog father?
What's that?
I don't remember his name, but I remember he's.
Yeah, did he say anything about tables? Did you ask him about that table question?
Yeah, I did, and he said, he, he said, as far as he knows, the town isn't providing anything, and that's all I could respond to.
So he's not?
No.
That's what I wanted to know. Okay. Let me, we'll look at that issue. Thank you.
So, so the Brigade is totally on board with doing the beer garden?
Yeah.
And now you have other breweries that are going to do it?
Well, he's working, it looks like he's working with two different breweries as well.
I got, it's very possible, and I can share it with the board.
So you're coordinating all of the, the beer garden?
Yeah, we've got, right now, we have potentials for Seven Saws, the Milk Room, and Lilac Hedge Farm.
So Lilac's the new one, okay.
So.
And that's all coordinated by you, through you?
Yeah, I've noted, I may go through with the emails and stuff, and we've talked, I've been coordinating, talking with the guy that's running the host, the truck part of it, and it, and it's, they're putting space in there for them. But the only thing I didn't know about is Lilac is the new one. I knew there were two that you were working with, and I was told you coordinate that, that piece of it, setting it all up and.
Yeah, no, and, and I said, Beth's not here. Beth provided me all of the documentation for the licenses on September seventh that we'll be coming for the board for.
The issue too with them, just like we had with the other, the Friday night events, is we want to make sure that they insure. So we're looking for that insurance document as well, and they said to us that they were going to provide it, so.
We've got all of them. The only one we don't have right now is Lilac, but Milk Room and Seven Saws provided it to Beth. She's got that on file.
If you need it, let me know, because I talked to this vendor, a lot of this, he's structured in every town. He's coming in, he's doing up all the setup and stuff, so it's not like the town has to do a lot in this event. He structures almost all of it, so it's mostly us just coordinating, making sure, like you say, that, you know, they have the permits, assurances, all that stuff. That's what I.
All right, I just wanted to make sure it was all being coordinated, because the other concern I have is I think that when you get the insurances, there's a kind of a crossover, because you have different groups serving at the same time. And accountability, because you have one drink, you know, people drinking at one place and drinking at another, and responsibilities and stuff.
Only one drink location.
Yeah, they.
Only one drink location.
At least, again, this was two years ago. The only alcohol that was served was under the beer tent by those vendors. Everybody else was selling Coke, Pepsi, you know.
Because I just want to make sure you get clarification on liability between if there's more than one vendor.
So it's, just to be clear here, right, so my understanding of the way this is working out is that the insurance is being done by the particular breweries that are adding it. They're doing the insurance base. There's only one group selling alcohol, which is you guys, period. Nobody else. And it's all going to be controlled by you. The only thing they haven't said to me is, and I don't know, I know they have to have a certain certification just to deport, and I know that, the former selectmen.
Jeff.
Jeff. Jeff was going to, actually, I think he was one of the guys that was serving at the Friday things. So I don't know who's.
You have no Fire Brigade participants, members, won't be serving. The servers will be Seven Saws, Milk Room, and Lilac Hedge. So we're just there to coordinate it. Do you have any?
The thing that's different this year versus two years ago is, Rutland Fire Brigade pulled a permit for the two vendors that we had last year. We had Seven Saws and a Fly Hard. Were there. So we, the way it was handled last time is, Rutland Fire Brigade pulled a permit. Those two ran under our permit. We had insurance, which was borderline whether we needed it or not. We chose to do it. This year, someone has told Timmy that we owe, the Fire Brigade is not to pull the liquor permit, which, okay. So the three vendors are going to go to you and pull a one-day permit for pouring beer on that. They're going to have their liability, and on their liability is going to be the town of Rutland and possibly the Rutland Fire Brigade, where their sponsor invited them to go, event on the name of the insurance.
Do you remember our conversation about insurance? This is a result of that conversation with my.
I, I, like I said, I just, where there's more than one vendor serving at the same time, I just want to be clear that the liability is straightened. I mean, this isn't on the agenda, so I guess we're probably getting too much in the details, but I just wanted to bring to your attention, to make sure that that is on. Does anybody have any other questions? Thank you, guys. All right, so I'm sorry, so Mitch is going to go through the proclamation?
Yeah. So there's kind of a typo on this, Ron, we'll figure it out.
That's okay. Tell me what you want to do.
Let's see what I have. Again, this came to us a while back, and I kind of got a flab, a back burner because of COVID and everything like that. We did have a Rutland resident who was involved, not involved, but witnessed an accident on his way home from, from service. Helped to act and save a pedestrian's life after being hit by a motor vehicle. So wanted to recognize an individual. So proclamation would read, whereas in December of 2020, Sergeant First Class Charles Wilkinson, a flight paramedic with Detachment One, Charlie Company, third of the one hundred and twenty-sixth Aviation of the National Guard, upon his commute home from Westfield, witnessed a pedestrian hit by a motor vehicle, and whereas, upon witnessing the event, stopped his motor vehicle, exited and acted in line with his paramedic training that may have prevented the loss of life. And whereas, Mr. Wilkinson, a Rutland resident, has served this town and country honorably in the National Guard for the past seventeen years, having completed five deployments. And whereas, the town of Rutland wishes to recognize the actions of Mr. Wilkinson, a Rutland resident in December of 2020, as well as a long history of public service, therefore, be it resolved that the town of Rutland, on behalf of its citizens, is grateful to Sergeant Charles Wilkinson for his actions on that fateful evening, and that hereby the town bestows upon Sergeant First Class Wilkinson the key to the town with all of its rights and privileges.
Okay, and then that is, is this, is this the correct date that you're going to have it? The issuance says of August twenty-third?
No, I think this was for approval tonight, and we had talked about this before, and then we would have it put on a nice letterhead, sign it. So I guess we could vote to sign it tonight, and then have it in the office for signature, framed and presented to the family.
I, I would just recommend that we have it at some of the event, whether it be at the food truck, some, some kind of a larger venue, just more public, rather than, I mean, that's up to you. That was just, that's just one of my suggestions, is that we have it at much of a larger venue.
I can coordinate with the family, but I would think that they would be able to look at that.
We'll clean up that, the typo tomorrow, the stains will be good, nice copy. I just frankly wrote this out quickly, because I got it tonight, so I was like, I guess.
So does the board agree that we would have it at a, well, a couple of.
So do we want to vote to sign it tonight?
Sure. Can I get a motion to?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, roll call.
Got it.
Benoit, aye?
For city, aye.
Wait, man, aye.
And Michael's aye. All right, thanks, Mitch. Appreciate that. All right. Follow-up on the broadband, so I know there was some information here, but so, Ron, we really just want the number, the details of the numbers and how it's going to be a benefit to the town from what we are doing now to what this would provide. So we really want a, we don't want, because, you know, it kind of went on quite a bit at the last, at the last meeting. We just, you know, in a nutshell, what's the benefit to the town?
No problem. So obviously, the benefit is going to be improved, communication for the town in terms of internet services and improved infrastructure services. That's going to benefit the town. The two major benefits is, we're going to be able to now hook up to our water company, and as you know, we're kind of updoing SCADA and needing to improve these computer systems there, which this will help enable to do that, and also hook up the community, uh, community center and give them more access as well. So this is going to be a faster system. It's going to be a better system with fiber optics. It's going to be a major improvement. It's going to give us new connections. So it's an overall benefit to the people of the town. I've asked both Mike and Paul, all right, yeah, Paul, to put together the numbers for you. And I'm going to ask Mike to go through the numbers with you. There was a lot of, I think, confusion last time, so I want to have just one person do it and go through it. And if there's any questions, Paul can answer them. But Mike, why don't you go through the actual numbers? We gave you all those numbers in advance, so you should have had, and we wanted you to give us any issues, because you know this is really time sensitive, so we wanted to make sure. I said, send them out to the board as early as possible, so if you have questions. As of now, we hadn't received any questions from any of the selectmen, so I think it's easy to understand. But I'd ask, Michael, just to go through it and explain.
Everybody gets it. It's correct. Okay, all right. So at the top, that table at the top shows our current fees right now that we're currently paying. The three locations, the sixty-six, what you said, being the water sewer treatment plant. Two forty-six encompasses the library, DPW, Town Hall, Public Safety Building, and the Annex. And then fifty-three, Glenwood, is the community center. So I broke it down, the monthly costs, yearly costs, and then over the next three years, if the fees do not go up. So you see those there. Yearly cost is seventy-three hundred, seventy-three hundred dollars a year for all three locations, and over three-year cost would be twenty-two thousand. Currently, right now, all three of those locations, actually, two of those locations are at speeds of a hundred meg. And the other one, being the water treatment facility, is at two and a half mets. So if the town decides to move forward with this charter broadband initiative, it would bring all those speeds up to five hundred meg, all three locations, as well as all the other buildings in the town. Actually, any questions there first before we move on to these options here?
Um, this, if I may, this does not include the hardware upgrade costs, correct? These are just strictly the service costs, right?
Exactly. Yep, yep. So there's three options that the town currently has right now that they need to consider by December twentieth, because that's when all the network infrastructure in the town will go dark at that point, meaning that nobody within our town buildings will be able to conduct any day-to-day business. So option one is to renew all the licensing for the current network hardware that's within the buildings right now. But come year three, we'd be looking at replacing all the equipment, because they're at end-of-life at that point.
Mike, can I just clarify, because I want to make sure, it took me a minute to understand it. The first thing, current data network is the cost of like the internet and stuff, right? That's the, the first chart. The second chart is different. That's the cost of the actual network, so it's the switches, it's the infrastructure itself, licenses. So it's not, it's nothing to do with the internet services. It's really the operation of the architecture or the hardware of the system.
Right, so that option one, the eleven thousand, six hundred and thirty-five, we would just add that into, your yearly cost isn't going to change. That's an additional cost on top of the yearly cost. I think we get that.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Option number two is to replace all the network equipment that's currently in all the buildings. And we'll push out the replacement for the next five years, and that came to roughly around seventy-five thousand dollars for that. With both options one and two, that is not running the fiber to the water treatment facility and the council agent. It's, they're going to stay at their current speeds. And then moving to option three, which we heard about last week, was the charter spectrum upgrade, which includes the running of the fiber to those two facilities, as well as improving the network infrastructure, replacing all the current equipment that's there right now with new equipment. Just alone to run the fiber to those two locations came to roughly a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Charter's picking up on their side of it. That's to run fiber to both those buildings alone.
Let me comment, just a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
What's really important for people who are watching this show, and it's worth slipping, I already knows, but if we go with option three, that's completely paid for from the American Funds Act. This is one of the buckets, that big pile of money I was saying about in the early days. This is one of the things that the money can be spent on. So this is no local taxpayers' dollars as it relates to doing all these upgrades for the first three years.
Well, it is taxpayer goes. I mean, where do you think the American Rescue Act money is coming from?
Yeah.
Right, Mike?
Yeah. It's not, it's, it's federal, it's not local tax dollars in terms of property taxes. It deals with federal funds and your federal income taxes and that, but this thing.
So once we do that, through the chair, so that, I can see Spectrum, by their estimated costs here, we're going to be paying one fifty, and because the one sixty-four and the seventy-five don't add up to one fifty, I'm assuming that means that charter's eased some of that cost.
Right.
Okay. What are the annual fees after we pay that one fifty? Because that is not something that the American Rescue Act is going to.
After year three?
Yeah.
You're saying? Okay. Yep, so after year three, I know Cassidy couldn't provide what that cost could be.
Okay.
So we roughly looked at it as if it stayed at the one fifty for three years. You're looking at fifty thousand a year, which that was an increase of forty-two thousand dollars a year on top of what we're paying right now. If that makes sense, right? Um, if, okay.
No, sorry. You can, if I may.
Yes.
If we were to stay with charter after the three years, do we need to be mindful of end-of-life on the equipment, or do they provide updates to the equipment? So essentially, if we, I guess what I.
Charter provides, Charter keeps the equipment active, updated, replaces them when they come end-of-life, but no additional costs as they.
So if we're looking at it, we're, we really should consider the, about the seventy-five thousand over five years, if we weren't to change.
Right.
That works out to about an additional fifteen thousand per year that we should be putting aside, because at the end of five years, we need to replace equipment if we were to stay with the yearly contract cost of roughly seventy-four hundred under our current structure umbrella. So it should really be seventy-four hundred plus fifteen thousand to bucket for that end-of-life every five years.
Yep.
Is that my understanding so far? But then with the charter, we might see an increase in our yearly costs with higher speeds and everything, but we aren't on the hook for any additional equipment costs, because they're already.
Well, fiber, managing the fiber, maintaining the fiber, if someone takes out a pole and destroys the fiber, it'd be your responsibility if Charter wasn't in the picture.
Right.
So there is some liability that goes along with that, that Charter takes care of.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we kind of, our budgeting for that seventy-five, if we were to stay under the current umbrella, that we're budgeting every roughly five years, roughly seventy-five thousand somehow that it's accounted for in our total yearly cost, because at some point we have to pay it.
We haven't yet, so.
Correct. But we should have.
Just so you know, we haven't, yeah. I'm agreeing with you, but we haven't done that.
No. Thank you. This, that answers my question.
To, my question, if I can be blunt, is we're upgrading our facilities. One, is there a need for additional speed at these facilities? And two, how does this benefit residents? If we're going to be spending their taxpayer money, a hundred fifty thousand dollars worth on broadband upgrades for town facilities, how am I benefiting living off Glenwood?
Yeah. Um, so I can speak to some of that. So upgrading the speeds at some of these locations is key, like the water treatment facility plant, where they're on a DSL line right now, and they're talking about much-needed upgrades that are needed there. This will provide that, um, a much larger network to provide at that facility. Do you have any?
I mean, they can all be brought back to the Town Hall service. I mean, Public Safety, we keep separate, you know, just because of hipper criminal justice information. But, you know, now the council of agents can be brought up and actually have high speeds back to the server. Right now, we can't even connect to the server from the water department, so we can include the water department into the town infrastructure, which makes it easier to share stuff. I mean, I don't think I can justify a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars over three years in that. You know what I mean, financially? It's, even if I thought it was that much money, it's one of those things that you're getting the job done now, so it really does benefit you. so it really does benefit people. I'm pessimist, because I just don't want to deceive people. Um, but it certainly makes it a lot easier to manage those, protect their data, because now they're writing back to the server, and the server gets backed up every four hours. It gets written off-site to Clinton, you know, every night. So, um, you know, if there's a ransomware attack or something like that, they're part of those backups.
I, I just.
Also, I'm sorry, also, uh, do you believe Cassidy did state previously that, um, running these fiber lines up Glenwood and partially up Wachusett, um, in the future could be utilized, um, for home connections? Currently, right now, they're not at that point right now, providing fiber to homes, but, uh, I believe she did mention that previously as well.
So the fiber on poles that currently are.
Provide.
Yeah, I, Tom, why that, I mean, that could be a decade.
Yes.
I guess, I don't, the first project we talked about, we brought to the board, was the water infrastructure on fifty-six, which is intelligent to me, because we're doing a tip project, and we don't wanna pave over the road and put sidewalks in and then have to dig it up, fibers down the road, and we have that structure issues. Um, and it benefits, directly benefits constituents. I, I, I'm, I don't know, and I appreciate the breakout, I mean, this is exactly what we were looking for at the last meeting. I know a lot of communities are looking at broadband access, and I would imagine it's because of a push from Charter to use these funds on broadband access. However, uh, I don't, right now, there seems to be some ambiguity as to how these funds can be used. Where is this project conceptually, where was it developed? Because it was just brought to us as a project. We haven't had any conversations about community priorities with this funding, and what other eligible uses of this funding can be. And when I look at potential impact for our constituents, I, I'm not sure this provides the most impact for a package of funds that was really meant to help communities deal with the fallout from a pandemic. That's my concern.
Mr. Chairman, if I could answer, attempt to do some of the answering. So, so first, thank you, and they're, they're good points. Let me, let me first say in regard to, to broadband is that prior to, when I first came here, there was some discussion about broadband and, and the water department and the community center trying to improve broadband in general throughout the town before Charter got lost. Just to be clear, Charter did not reach out to me for this. They had given me a letter many, many months ago about, you know, if we ever needed help with broadband. What really made me look at this project was the buckets that we could get under the American Funds Act, what could we use this money for? I, I'll say this, I completely agree with you, that I hate the buckets in the American Funds Act. I don't think they help our town in the ways that we need it. I think they're designed a lot more for inner-city stuff than for us. So trying to spend the amount of money, um, that we're getting under this act, and things that would benefit the town, are a little more difficult than I would like. Um, that's why I think the, the biggest chunk of this will benefit water sewer infrastructure more than anything else, which is gonna help our ratepayers over the long term, that, you know, we're gonna do things that would help that service, and they don't have to pay for it, you know, under that, it'll be all paid for under this. I think, when you talk about it's not a direct program for individual citizens, you're absolutely correct, but it will improve the services by increasing the speed in all the town buildings and improving and using fiber. It's gonna improve to some degree our customer serviceability by having our computers all work a lot faster for tax bills and all the things that we use computer services for. So it, it's good to have the town services be upgraded across the board, which this will do. The, the infrastructure payment, uh, of seventy-five grand, we're gonna pay it without one way or another. This allows the fiber to be built effectively, I'm gonna be careful, at no cost to the town. Let's just divide into federal funds, I know what you're thinking, but the federal funds, we won't have to put the seventy-five thousand dollars out from local tax dollars from property taxes to pay for that equipment grade. So for the first three years, we'll have all the new equipment put in, we'll have the fiber ready to put in. At the end of the three years, that's where the big decision comes in. At the end of the three years, the question is, do you still want Charter to manage this network or not? And I think Paul's question is, I don't think we really need him after the three years. If they can manage the network through CMGeeks, and we don't need to continue the contract after the three years, that that will have the fiber all installed and all that stuff, that, that's my understanding.
I don't think that's how that works. I, I, I just, I'm not, like, you think that after Charter installs their fiber, another company can come in and manage that?
They're not gonna rip it out, CMGeeks.
They're not gonna rip it out.
Once, once the fiber's installed, it's stock fiber that we own, and we can utilize it with equipment that we purchase. We've asked that question, and we've got answers in the email.
Hmm.
Now, there's one other, just one other thing about the current fiber that links DPW, library, the public safety, the annex. It's all in Community Hall, so you've got your oldest building. I mean, the hurricane could have taken the roof off that, it's on the top floor. That equipment could have got lost in the hurricane because of water damage. So this project will terminate all the fiber for all the buildings into public safety, which is a much better controlled environment, has much higher security, it has ac- it has cameras, it has access codes. You can't get to the equipment unless you swipe a card, so it increases security as well, so. And right now, we depend on two buildings. Community Hall is the most important, because it's the hub for all the fiber, and then the annex, which has the internet connection. So if we lose the annex, we lose the internet connection. If we lose Community Hall, we lose all the connections to all of our facilities and the internet, for the five facilities that are connected. This is gonna put it into a building that actually is at a much higher level to accept that responsibility from the failure standpoint.
Okay.
I mean, I guess it's, if I may, I'm sure, I guess it's a little bit of the town being a little bit more on the proactive side, going to fiber optics and increasing speeds and everything. I imagine as town continues to grow, the needs, the internet needs of the different DPW, town halls, water, the water treatment plant especially, I can imagine, um, could, could increase. And so by being a little bit proactive, using these funds that are available as an infrastructure upgrade, and seeing this as an infrastructure upgrade that could benefit as the ta- the town, as the town continues to grow, um, is maybe a little bit of a different perspective from how we generally operate. Is it more reactive than proactive?
Well, I would disagree with that. I, I, we don't know the cost, I mean, we know this number right here
Right.
that we're paying. We don't know anything after that, and we're still gonna down the road have to replace equipment, so.
No, if we s- if I understand correctly, if we stay with Charter down the road, we won't have to replace equipment.
Ever again.
Correct, correct.
Correct.
My, that was my question, that if we.
But we will have to come with that, you know, significant, you know, annual fee.
But, I mean, yeah, we, we know that.
Right.
But we believe the difference is around forty-three thousand, yeah. Is that right?
And, does that, for a year, does that include factoring in that additional fifteen thousand per year for the equipment upgrade or not?
Yeah.
No, so, so if, if you stick with Charter, you know, year three, or year four, you're looking at budgeting an extra forty-three thousand.
So, essentially, we'd be about.
That will include all internet, that includes the maintenance of the equipment, the replacement of the equipment as it goes, end-of-life, et cetera, et cetera. Charter owns all of that, and like I said, if something happens to the fiber, the fiber needs repair or something, they're on the hook for that.
But I mean, that, that forty-three thousand is a lot higher than what we're paying now in the annual basis.
Yes, yes. Except, if, now, think about it, if it's seventy-five thousand dollars for, for the equipment, you're essentially, that's over three, that's over five years, not three.
Right.
That, that money's gonna be kicked back out, 'cause we're not gonna have to pay that cost.
But it's still cheaper.
So if I did my math.
Oh, it's still cheaper, yeah, it's, it's less expensive than the forty, what'd you say, forty-three grain a year, whatever it is.
It seems like it's about.
Yeah.
That doesn't include the seventy-five.
Roughly a twenty thousand dollar difference per year. If we take the seventy-four hundred that we're currently paying for just the service.
Probably close to twenty.
Plus.
So if you budget fifteen thousand
Right.
every year for equipment, and then, you know, if you went back to the original, the original, which is a hundred megabyte.
Yeah.
Those remote facilities, look what they have, or deal with that outside of this conversation, 'cause you don't know what that conversation,
Right.
what those numbers are. You know, you'd be looking at fifteen, and then the seventy-four.
I don't know what. Twenty-two four per year, roughly somewhere.
Twenty-two four compared to the forty-three.
Yeah, so roughly twenty thousand.
And, you know, this is looking at forecasting, you know, when we go buy switches in three years, they still gonna cost what they cost. I mean, is Charter's service still gonna be that number? I mean, that far out, it's a little bit tough, but based historically, the numbers will be pretty comparable.
I was just trying to get like my head around the ballpark, you know, because I think we do ourselves a little bit of a disservice by not factoring in that somehow accounting for that seventy-five thousand
Correct.
that we need every five years, because we can't just suddenly be like, all of a sudden, let's hope we have this as free cash, because we may or may not, and it really should be a budgeted effect, so.
And it's also, not updating equipment, letting equipment go end-of-life is becoming a huge security threat. So if you don't read it, if you don't, you know, follow that stuff, you know, routers going end-of-life, they could have open holes, and you know, it happened earlier this year.
Yeah, we know, it's been a lot of.
Where people didn't patch their firewalls, and their VPN usernames and passwords were listed. Once they had that, they connected to the VPN, people use the same passwords for their internal systems, those places were taken down with ransomware.
So it increases that security side also.
Yeah.
Cybersecurity, thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions? Does anybody else have any questions regarding the proposal? All right, do we, uh, wanna make a motion?
I mean, I think the biggest advantage is in three years, this becomes stock fiber for the town that can use with their own equipment. And Cassidy is on, you know, we don't ask her directly, she has to turn it around, so.
So can I just suggest what a motion might be if the board wants to do this or not? The motion, because we gotta, the motion would be to enter into a contract with Spectrum in the amount of a hundred and forty-nine thousand oh forty, utilizing American Funds Act for that, for that purpose. That would be the type of motion you would make, I mean, you could tailor it some more if you think, but that's the general concept of the motion.
I, we haven't done any of the projects, I mean, we really haven't been presented with anything that this money can be used for.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So, so you're correct, in, well, you were, obviously, with the road project, this is the second project that we've brought forward.
Yep.
As I said before, the buckets of what we can spend the money on is extremely limited. It's for water infrastructure projects, for broadband, for loss revenue, which we don't really have any. Uh, for health-type things, for instance, things that would improve, um, vaccinations or healthcare kinds of services. We could pay professional workers, healthcare professionals, we could pay more money from these funds if we want to. Um, that's the struggle with this, is, is how we can use the money is so limited for what we could do here in town. We could use a little bit, which I've suggested to you, uh, we could use a little bit for tourism, because tourism is one of the buckets that you can use it for. Economic development under tourism and helping businesses that were directly impacted by COVID. Very difficult for us to do, 'cause we don't have that structure of staffing for that kind of help to businesses. Uh, but, you know, it, it can't be used, I wanna be very clear, it can't be used for general capital improvements. And that's what I would really wish we could use it for. Could we use it to fix a roof? Could we use it, we can't use it for any of that stuff. So we're trying to bring forward options to you, and we got a long way to go. As you know, it's about a million six, uh, in, in, uh, county money, and about somewhere around nine hundred thousand dollars in, in regular town money. Um, I think we did, we allocated about four hundred and eighty, now this will be another hun- one fifty. So you're looking at four eighty, one fifty, that's five, that's a loop of one eight forty, so a little, around six hundred-ish. And we still got a million, a million four to figure out what to, a million six to do, figure out what to do it. And it's, I'm gonna tell you, it's gonna be, it's gotta be water sewer, because we don't have any other big things under the buckets. So I, I guess, you know, broadband is something that's a viable option, it's a reasonable option. Towns are doing it all across the state, they're trying to improve their broadband, but it's a, you know, it's an open question, you don't have to do it. So it's, it's really a personal decision as to how important you think broadband is in computer services. And that's, that's why they pay you the big, big money to make those work. We're gonna bring in new projects as we can figure out good ways to, that we could recommend to you, and, and it's gonna be, gonna be a struggle.
Okay.
There's one thing I'm not quite sure we've made clear, but, you know, at least for the three years, with the, you know, the funds are covering this, it does defer, you know, the twenty-two thousand dollars in the current cost, so that does get deferred out over the next three years. So there's a local tax savings. And also, the cheapest option, the option one, to renew the Meraki contracts, which we didn't budget for that, because I couldn't get quotes in time for it, and, and I started the year before the budget was set.
He's, he's taking the three-year total of the internet costs.
There is a local.
So it'll be a surplus every year.
You know, I mean, um, local tax defer, again, come year four, you know, we've got decisions to make, and it's gonna cost the town money, whether we stay with Spectrum or we, you know, purchase equipment. Um, so, at least for the three years.
Tim, I think Tim had it.
Speaking from the standpoint of the planning board and dealing with years, and also helping out Nancy with, with the town's, call it, infrastructure, I am so for this, 'cause it's, we get such a weak distribution of where our, where our wireless, where our fiber is. I, I think this is an excellent project, not only for the different buildings, but to basically build a, one area where our equipment's safe. 'Cause right now, the back building of the old library, if I'm not mistaken, is where most of the internet hardware is, which you can literally, it's one door and you're in, I, I just don't see that as a safe area. And then, like, um, the gentleman said, uh, the town hall is another fiber hub. We really should have that over in, um, the communications facility, so I, and I think having, what I call a hub.
And there will be, there will still be network equipment in the library and all the buildings, but the hub will be public safety.
Correct, they, they call it the hub, and the star, and star arrangement will go out, but the security will be at the hub.
Correct.
And, and that's why I think it's just, I, I think, I, I get it with the one forty-nine, it's a big number, but I think in the long term, for the community and for the town, it's a huge positive, considering what we're dealing with, 'cause I remember over at the community center trying to get internet services, using the DPW to run wire over there and put routers someplace, wireless routers. I thought that was ridiculous, but we did it, we got it operational. But I think with this money, this is an opportunity to give the town more of a back, back hub. And I think the citizens would see that, because down the road for the water treatment plant, if they use, and I apologize for the technical term, SCADA, which is information from the water treatment plant, to the DPW, to the direct, director's apartment, they'd have that backbone there to be able to transmit that data back and forth. So that's my two cents.
Right now, we struggled just to help Neil remotely with this current internet connection.
Which part of that upgrade, just to understand, at the water treatment plant? One of the things that they're looking for in technology over there right now is to be able to, uh, not have an operator to be there on the weekends and stuff. And part of that, I think, is that component, that improved technology, so that we don't have to have somebody there seven days a week. And that, that, I think is gonna tie well into that, you know?
Well, we need to find someone to run it first.
But, we're gonna, we're gonna have to get somebody, no question. Karen?
Clarification, so many numbers are running around.
Yeah.
Yes. From January one, say, everything happens, January one, three years out, the cost is the one forty-nine, one fifty. There's no monthly bills.
That, that's a three-year cost, so yes, Charter would bill you monthly.
So we would have no internet costs
Right.
if you pay, if you continue to pay Charter the fifty thousand dollars a year, roughly, yes, you would have no internet costs, it's built into that number.
So, but if we just look at this, this three years.
Yep.
Yep.
There's, there's no additional cost, it comes out of the American Funds Act.
Correct.
We could start saving some of this money, putting it aside to your, yeah, I know, it's a joke, but.
No, I've.
But there is budgeted money, this, you know, twenty, almost, um, yeah, well, twenty-two thousand. It's twenty-two thousand one hundred seventy-six dollars a year that's being budgeted that will not be spent in those three years.
So. That will not be spent in this twenty years, three years.
And in upgrades, our, you know, cybersecurity and to fiber optics and speeds and every, you know, I, I'm, I, yeah, I.
She's just a.
Back.
I, I, I guess I would just also say that, who knows what three years is gonna look like?
Yeah.
All the technology could be changed by then too, and we might be looking at another whole, whole different scenario. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Karen, do you have a question?
Um, so we decided to do nothing, did I hear that we have an unbudgeted cost that's gonna come due?
Yes.
Is that what I heard, and how much was that?
It was eleven thousand six hundred thirty-five.
Okay, so there we go, guys, it's eleven thousand six hundred dollars that we don't have in the budget. Why, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but eleven thousand six hundred dollars that we don't have.
So I'm just gonna make the point now, so it doesn't come to a problem later, this seven thousand dollars of annual internet cost, we can't, even though we're not gonna have to pay for it, we gotta leave it in the budget somewhere, so we don't have the big increase in four years if we do it. So me and Karen will figure out how we're gonna keep that money in the budget, so that we don't have that be a shortfall down after three years. Right, you guys, so, so you're gonna say we don't wanna, 'cause we could cut the money right now.
I'm wondering where the eleven thousand's coming from, I'm not worried about next year, I'm worried about the eleven thousand that's gonna end life.
So I just wanna make sure we understand we don't cut that money, because we don't wanna be, have a bigger problem in four years, the fourth year.
So, are you ready for a motion?
Yeah, I think, I think we'll do it.
So I'll make a motion that the town authorize, authorize Ron to enter into an agreement with Spectrum, Charter Spectrum, um, in the amount of one thousand four.
in the amount of one thousand four hun- one hundred forty-nine thousand dollar, one, one hundred forty-nine thousand forty dollars, using the American Funds money to upgrade our town internet, including the running of fiber optics, replacing network equipment, and a three out, a three-year agreement.
Using one hundred American Funds.
Yeah, she did say that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
You have a roll call?
Call it high.
Benoit high?
Your city high.
Whitman high.
And Nichols high. All right.
And thank you Paul and Mike and Cassidy and Ron for all of this, I know it's been a lot of back and forth, and it's clearly a hard.
It's complicated, I mean, you know, we've been living these numbers, you have an hour to look at.
And it's clearly a hard decision for us to make and try to figure out the best, you know?
Yep.
You're welcome, anytime.
But I think Mike just breathed.
Thank you, Cassidy.
Karen maybe a little bit too.
All right, thank you.
Guys, and I'll touch base with you after, Ron.
She'll touch base with you after. If we had better connections, it'd be all.
It's a purpose.
I was trying, I was trying to do good about not, not talking, I, I didn't wanna start confusing everybody like I did last time.
Tim, do you have a question?
Thank you, have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cassidy.
The only thing I wanted to make sure, because being on the call to the ever-source side, where I see these large projects, I'd really like for Verizon, I'm sorry, for Spectrum, to keep this board up to date on like a project management. Because putting in poles, running fiber, getting that equipment, that's not happening in two months. Some of these projects are upwards six to eight months.
They say they can get it done.
Yeah, okay.
By the end of the year.
They've got, yeah, they've gotta put poles in, and good luck with that.
I mean, I expect that Ron will keep us.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk a day.
I just, I just wanted the board to be updated, because if this thing gets out of control and it's eight or nine months down the road, then.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should have a stopgap schedule, if it's not delivered December twentieth, they don't get it. Because they're gonna be forced to be spending all the money.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, next is discussion on wage matrix. So, this is to take a look at possibly revising the current matrix, to allow non-union employees to be eligible for step increases beyond their first four years of employment based on a newly determined schedule. I know this has come up several times around discussions regarding the current way that we are looking at increases, and also allowing non-union employees to retroactively awarded their step increases when the budget allows for a given number of times. So this is basically just take another, just start a discussion and take a look at our current matrix and the way that it's being managed, and see what potentially we might be able to.
Sue, if I could comment about this, because I think this is, I think this is an important discussion, I really appreciate you making bring it up. And it's been a frustrating discussion for me and the finance committee, in trying to deal with this, this particular issue. I truthfully don't think there's much wrong with the matrix itself. The matrix was developed back, as you, I think the treasurer sent you guys out a study that was done. The problem isn't the matrix, the problem is if you set up a process, then you have to stay with the process, you have to fund the process. And we haven't been funding the step increases, and maybe in some cases since, since this was initiated, the COLAs. The, the obvious sense, and Tamika's letter is dead on, and one of the problems that, that I have to deal with and had to really deal with this year is, is the unfairness in the system. The unions and everything get a certain steps every year, they get certain raise every year, but non-union, because we can, they're not contractual, we can decide not to do the steps or not to do the COLAs. It sets up a very difficult relationship even between staff members in my buildings. The solution is to fund the matrix the way it should be funded, we simply haven't had the money to do it, is the problem. I don't know, Tamika brings up a good point that was brought up to me by a number of my department heads. You know, okay, we decide not to fund the COLA this year, or we decide not to fund the step. They get steps for four years, employee gets steps, usually when you first take a job, you get steps. For four years, you get steps, and then you're done, and then all you get is COLAs moving on. But what we've done is various times is, is people have been moving through the steps, maybe they got the first-year step, but then we didn't have any money to give them a second-year step, and then we didn't have a third-year step, maybe we give them a fourth-year step. Well, are they, the question is, are they entitled to the second, third-year step we didn't fund during that year, because they're supposed to get it? And then they get backwards and say, well, I never received a step, and it, it gets to be extremely controversial, and it creates very bad employee morale. And the only thing I can say to my employees is that we just don't have the money, given what's going on with the budget deficits. So I don't, I don't really believe the matrix is the problem, I believe it's the funding mechanism. Now, the finance committee will tell you that I was pretty hard about, let's try to fund this, this, these COLAs and things, and it was the last thing I was willing to give up. But the truth is, the finance committee makes a very good point, that, you know, it's either cutting those raises or cutting out some important service to the town, maybe police overtime or fire overtime. So they're caught in a, what's the most important thing to budget, and they, they go, it's just more important to fund the police department, these needs than to fund these extra raises. So I understand, I can't, it's hard to argue with them over that, because it's a logical point of view. But it, it creates all kinds of animosity, all kinds of problems for my departments, and they fight. You know, they see one manager who's got a contract, get a big raise in a COLA, they see another manager, same manager, different department, doesn't get a COLA or a step, right? So I, I completely agree with Tamika's position, I don't have a solution, because it's all about money. And the reality is, we've made serious cuts, and I don't know how you, you fund it if we, if we're cutting other important services, so. That, that's the dilemma.
Well, I mean, obviously, nobody wants to cut raises or cost of living or anything like that. I mean, the only way that you can argue it is if you have a solution, so you can't say you don't wanna do it. You'd have to tell them, okay, I don't wanna do it, because I think we should cut this, but that was never presented.
But like, what I did is, I mean, that was the last thing, when I presented to the finance committee, you remember, we started with an over a million dollar deficit because of the school numbers, right? So the last thing that I cut, in my thing, I got it down to about a two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar deficit. And I hadn't yet cut, in my, in my presentation, I hadn't yet cut those raises out.
Right.
But when we got down to that last two-fifty, it was like, these are really painful nasty cuts, and we all tried to work together to figure out where to get there. And everybody from the finance committee, me throughout, ideas and stuff, but those were eliminating staff positions, you know? How do you eliminate a staff position and give somebody else a raise, right? That was the discussion that, and, and listen, it caused some agitation between me and the finance committee, because, you know, I'm fighting about this process of what I think is fairness in my staff, but I completely agree that they're making logical decisions. So, I, I don't have a, a solution, if, you know, we've got, that we've gotta figure out.
Right, and I guess my point was that you were both on the same page, you didn't wanna cut the increases, but, you know, you were adamant about not, but you didn't cut. There wasn't never a solution to say where the money was gonna come from, so we need to say everybody was on the same page, it was not.
We were, and that's what I said, at the end of the day, I couldn't argue with the finance committee, because they were, they had no place else to offer a cut that wasn't more painful than the raises.
This isn't a this-year problem, this is, this is a problem that goes back many years. So to say, Ron, you didn't present options is a long affair, because we've been bad at this historically. So I think it's.
I, I don't, I don't agree with you. I, I know, I don't think we've been bad at this, we've had this same battle every year.
Yeah, I'm bad, not bad.
Right, so you need to make a decision what's gonna be cut or not be cut. So if you're gonna balance a budget, you need to say, okay, I don't wanna cut raises, then I need to cut this, so you, yes, you do need to.
I understand how budgeting works, Lyndon.
Well, obviously not, because we've had this, this, every year in the finance committee has had this same dilemma.
Okay, what I'm saying is, we've created a situation amongst non-union employees that is unfair. Not that anyone's bad at their job, I understand that we're all good at going back and forth with the budget, but it's creating a morale issue, and it's something historically where, again, these steps have been skipped over, or not, you know, taken into account or whatever, and we're becoming less attractive to quality employees. So I'm not saying we're bad at budgeting, I mean, everyone's trying their best to make the numbers work. But that's, I, I think there has to be a solution, because we've been losing people, in case you haven't noticed, and we're gonna continue to lose more. I think the good thing is that moving forward, we probably have some retirements coming up, and we can save some money that way when we're hiring new positions. But we have to get into a better situation where we're able to treat employees in an equitable manner on both the union and non-union side.
I mean, I, I just, with retirements, we ended up, every time we rehire, we pay them more, so that, that doesn't help.
Well, I mean, that's, that's a failure of government, that has nothing to do with it.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, that's not gonna help us, so that's not, that's gonna, not if you pay the person more, when the, when you lose an employee and then you have to pay to replace them, it costs more money, that's not gonna help the budgeting process.
How, how would you, if somebody's retiring after thirty years of service, how would you have to pay more to replace them?
That historically, that's what we've been doing.
Truthfully, he's right.
Tamika has a question, it was her, she didn't bring up the subject.
I just wanted to say that taking the money and the budget out of it, respectfully, when I do have to disagree with you, because I, I think there is a problem with the structure. And I think the biggest problem is, is that a- after year four, you're done. But the cost of living continues to increase. So essentially, you could have a brand-new employee who starts six months prior to the new budget, and they're getting a step increase. And you've got an employee that's been here for ten years and gets nothing, because they passed their four years.
And, and I, I guess I've never really understood that either, saying that we don't ever go back, because I can understand if it wasn't funded one year, but that step, I would think they would still be eligible at whatever point there is consideration, they would be eligible for that step, and, and I don't know how that just gets ignored year after year. I, you know, I certainly agree with that, I've never understood how that process works.
So let's, we're talking apples, oranges, let's, let's get the first piece, which is different out of it. There's a difference between COLAs and steps. Steps, first of all, are usually set up for low, when, when people first start their job, to help speed up their, their salary increases, because they're usually the lowest players, the lowest employees on the block in terms of pay. So the steps are for four years to help fill them up and to continuously hopefully keep those employees. The cost of living increase is continuous every year, you wanted to go up, to talk what she's talking about, that inflation goes up, cost of living is supposed to stay up to match that inflation rate, so that's the distinction between the two. The problem, I, I agree with you, Lyndon, to the point of, I've got employees all over the board. I've got employees that didn't get their second step, didn't get their third step, it's, it's so messed up. That I just took a position and said, you know what, if you're still in the steps, I'm gonna put in the budget for the steps. Yeah, I got cut anyway, but I put in the position that if you're entitled to a step, if you're in your, still in your first four years, I'm still doing the step process. Anybody that's out of the four years, I'm not doing steps, even if you've missed them. But truthfully, it didn't matter, because I knew the steps I put in for the employees that were in their first four years were gonna be cut, so I didn't. It was more of, I had to find some logical way to do steps. And you got employees that are twenty-year employees that never finish their steps. I got the department heads that have been around for, God knows, and they, they never got their third and fourth steps, and they're, they've been here for twenty years. I don't, I know how to fix that, you know? I don't know if I should kick back and give them a third step, I, so I just said, the only thing that was clear is, okay, after four years, if you're, you know, you, I'm sure you lost your steps, the, the town didn't finance it, I can't fix that.
So is this based on some state, like, because the federal government, you get steps your entire career. It's not like the first four years or whatever, so you, you're always eligible for steps, you know?
No, Minnesota's different.
So I know, so.
Local is usually, sometimes it's three years, sometimes it's four.
Right, so it's different, but so, so does the, does the state say, or the town say that you just don't get it after a certain point, because you've been around too long?
Yeah, it's usually steps are, yeah, usually steps in most towns are like a three-year, four-year process, and then you're done with steps, and all you get is COLAs. Now, union contracts can negotiate whenever, union contracts wanna negotiate, if they wanna negotiate in, you know, I think, I think DPW negotiated a five-year step.
But.
But, but, but it says that if you, if you don't get your step too bad, because it's too late, you didn't get it, then.
It doesn't say it, it doesn't say you get it.
So why are we interpreting it that you didn't get it, so it's too bad you don't get it? I mean, I understand the funding mechanism is a problem, but how can you just say, oh, well, you didn't get it ten years ago, and everybody else going forward is gonna get it, how, I don't know.
Because I have no practical way to make it work, it was just, it, it, you know, you, do I give department managers that, that didn't get a step, you know, twelve years ago, do I give it to them now? I mean, I, I, they, these, these people should have got steps, you know, ten, twelve years ago. And we're not talking, it would be different if it was like one year, it's been this long process of some years they get steps, some years they don't. People are going on, these department managers are going on, in some cases, I think, over fifteen years with no step. I, I just didn't have a solution on how to figure out how to fix that, I don't.
Becky, do you have any comments on, like, this process and how it's, have you heard from other towns that they had similar issues, or?
Hi.
Hi. Sorry to put you on the spot, but I figured you have some kind of input as far as, you know, how it's been handled.
Well, it, I mean, again, it all comes down to the budget, and it's, if, sometimes there's a, the COLA isn't, it's nothing in writing that we have to give a COLA, that we have to give a step, but if the money isn't there, then, then people don't get their steps, and people don't get their COLAs. So it's just, there is, the matrix that exists, that there is four steps. Usually people start at step one, if, sometimes if people hire them with more experience, they'll start them at step two. But then, once you, you're, you know, if the budget allows, you get a step every year, which is a standard, standard practice. And then on top of that, but if you get to step four, which, and if you, I don't know if you guys have copies, I'm sure you've seen the matrix. But every, they all go up to step four. Once you get to step four, it is like, like, the issue, the only way you get an increase is through the COLA process.
Now, I thought when we had this matrix done, that we, we, we had a process in place to bring everybody up to the levels that they should be. I thought there was a correction, corrective mechanism to bring people up to whatever level their salary should be at. That, wasn't that part of the matrix when we had it completed?
Yes.
Uh, I, it was in two thousand ten is when the matrix was established.
But that, that is the concept behind.
I don't know.
All right, so did that not happen, Ron?
Uh, two thousand ten, the concept when you do those employee, the employee updates, you bring in a company, is you look at all these salary structures all throughout town, you look at the job descriptions, and you try to set the wages where they should be in the marketplace. That's the concept, I wasn't here when they did that, but that's the concept of doing that. Now, the, the strange part about that, and I don't know what happened in two thousand ten, is a lot of towns do that, because they have a good intention that they wanna fix the salaries, and then they look at the numbers and go, we can't afford that, they don't do anything. So I don't know, in two thousand ten, did they actually put the money in to bring that up to where they thought they should be at that time?
I don't think so, there's a, there's a class and compensation study that I have, that I have a copy of, that was, that is the original one that was done in two thousand ten, that set, established the rates, and with all the towns that they surveyed and that type of stuff. And I think it was updated for the MTP salary schedule when Margaret was here, which, so that was like, I don't know, five, five, six years ago or something like that. So they reviewed the wages, the rates that are on the sheet, and not sure if it, it changed or not, so that it brought it more up in line with other towns in the areas. But it's, it, in two thousand ten is when it started, and then it's just been going, you know, I think there was a three percent COLA one year, there's a two percent COLA, and that brings the whole matrix up for everybody that's on there.
Right, and I thought at that time, that what we did is we tried to stage it like, you know, one or two-year periods to bring people up, and did stages of, of raises to bring them up to that certain level. Didn't we do that over, Karen, do you remember?
I remember something like that, I can tell you what year that happened, but I remember the conversation.
So I, I thought we were getting to that point where we were bringing everybody up to where they're supposed to be, so I guess that's where my confusion is, why we're not there.
So this goes to your point, and, and actually Mitch's conversation as well. What happens when you lose an employee, and the employee leaves, and the reason sometimes employees stay when they don't get to higher rates is because they, their vesting depends on plan, they got vacation time, they won't leave, right? Even though their salary of a new coming, a new incoming person would be higher than what they're actually making, right? So what happens is invariably, you lose a position, all of a sudden now, you have to make that a market rate, because now you'd need to fill somebody in a position, nobody's gonna come in for less than market rate. So are you paying, you know, could you have a third-year employee retire, and then somebody come in and be paying the same salary? The answer is yes, because the market rate has grown dramatically, if you wanna get attractive employee, finding employee at a good rate, you're gonna pay closer, near top dollar, and that happens particularly in things like the finance director positions.
Yeah, but those are, those are executable positions, we're talking about other positions. I mean, you have state employees that are working in administrative assistant roles, making six figures, because they've been in the system for thirty years. If you're gonna replace that person, that person's gonna cost a third of that price, so you can't possibly tell me that's true.
That's true, and so, because if we look at the water department right now, right, we lost an employee in the water department. We, we can't get an employee for the salary we're paying.
Well, there's also a shortage throughout the state for that particular licensure.
That's, that's, I'm sure there's a lot of positions like that in municipal government that there's shortage, so.
Karen, Karen, you have a question?
They're tough, they're tough to get those positions, so you gotta pay market to get somebody.
Hey Becky, did we ever miss a year without giving a COLA?
This year.
Um, not, this was the first year since I've been here, and I've been here since two thousand thirteen, I think there was.
So we've always gone back, whether it be in the fall, we've always made, it's not steps, but the. So we've always gone back, whether it be in the fall, we've always made, it's not steps, but the colas have always been in place. This is the only year as of right now that we haven't.
Yes.
Today.
As far, as far as I can remember, you know.
I assume that the finance committee would still look at any possibilities in the fall, that.
I just, I wanted to make sure, because there was a lot of stuff going around, like they missed it, I'm like, I didn't remember.
Right.
No, I, it, it's to my, to my, anything I remember, I don't remember, it was always on the table, but I don't remember us actually cutting it. So the answer is you're absolutely right.
It's always been on.
Myself and Karen have had discussions, that depending upon what free cash is in the fall, that's something that we would consider, and it's something I'm gonna recommend if we have reasonable free cash.
Right, and I I think that's always been the finance committee's, um, position is to always do everything they can to try to, to, you know.
But it just makes a bigger structural deficit to start off the new year.
But we need to have a balanced budget, so.
I'm, if I may, I guess.
I, it.
Go ahead, Becky.
Go ahead. I was just gonna say, I'd, like, I don't think there's a problem with the matrix. It it it, you get up to steps four, I mean, you you are stuck at step, step four, and you hopefully you get the colas throughout the year, but that's, um. It works if you follow the procedure, but financially, we can't always follow the procedure, so.
And if I may, I think some of it is, we've heard a lot about employee morale and everything, and I think just kind of automatically being told that you missed your steps ten years ago, too bad for you, doesn't help employee morale, and even though currently we don't necessarily have the budgetary funding. At least taking that into consideration and looking at, okay, you missed these steps, who else has missed their steps, where are they? What do we need to get, to do to get there, is a different tact than just saying, I can only look at who's coming up for steps right now, and everybody else is too bad, so sad, not my problem.
Right, and and that was kind of my concern, because I thought when we did the matrix, that we had a mechanism in place to bring people up to where they should be, which now all of a sudden, that's not the case, so I guess that was where I was surprised and kind of concerned.
I mean, we can, we can figure out the numbers.
Yeah, people, people are all over the place.
Yeah.
We can try to figure out the numbers to, to fix, we we, we have to look at who's on what step, Becky, I'm talking about the older than four year people. Look and see who missed steps and everything else, and try to calculate that going forward for somebody. The question is there, though, in our budget situation, we haven't had funds to to even get the the new people to afford them, we're not giving anybody a step, so.
But I think it's, it's an awareness, and and it could be some, a target to try to work at a way to bring them up to where they should be.
We can cut anything, just to say no.
Because I don't, I don't think you just say, oh, well, you missed it. I mean, I I think we owe them to at least consider it, maybe we can't, we, you know, that's gonna be something the finance committee can try to work out or whatever, but I do think we should address it and not just kind of shove it to to the side to say, oh, well, we missed it.
I think.
I I think just showing a good faith eff- effort to try to bring people up to where they should be.
Because I think generally, our non-union, non-contract employees are the ones that take the hits, they take the hits with the steps and with the cola.
Mm-hmm. Okay, Tom. Mm-hmm.
And so I think to at least be trying to have these honest conversations with them, they know what our budget situ- situation is, it's not, I mean, it's, they, they go through it with us every year. But just to have an awareness and kind of that willingness to have the conversation, okay, this is where you are, this is where you should be, what can we do to get you there?
Right.
And it's gonna take time, it's not.
And 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 really show that we're making a good faith effort, I I know Carol had a comment too.
How often is the metrics updated?
The what?
How, how often is?
Two thousand ten.
You mean the study?
It was updated when Margaret was here, she said, Margaret updated it for the MTP.
Oh, okay.
So, so, the, the annual.
Five years ago.
I think they, they adjusted the rates for the MTP employees.
Yeah, yep.
So the hourly rates have not been looked at since?
They, they go up, they go, the whole, the whole, the whole matrix goes up based on the cola.
That's what I was hoping to hear, thank you.
But you just, thank you, correct me if I'm wrong, Becky, they did a new study, and then because it cost so much, they just ignored it, right, Becky?
Yeah.
Didn't they do an upgrade study and decided they they couldn't fund it?
I I think what what came out of that MTP study was, we were, we were on target, we were in the, in the median, so not, and the people that were being paid on that were where they should be. I I'll have to find the study, so it wasn't, we didn't adjust the whole matrix, and 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 if we had, then we would have been in a financial situation.
And so I I I think my thought is that, I mean, like, the finance committee has always been committed to do everything it can to try to, um, honor people's cost of living increases. And I think, like we're saying, it's not that the matrix is the problem, it's the way that we followed it. So I think that, you know, between the the town administrator and the finance committee, in trying to look at ways to try to make sure that people are brought up to where they should be. Whatever mechanism, I know that there's always a funding issue, but we should at least be looking at that as a potential class that we, you know, we should try to honor.
So Mr. Chairman, let me just kind of put, we gotta remember the bigger picture here, too. During the budget process, we were talking about steps and raises, but we were also eliminating positions and cutting people to half time. And, you know, it it's like, hard to say to some people, hey, we're working on getting you a step increase, when I'm laying off people and cutting their jobs out and putting it half time and stuff. So there was, the picture, I think the the focus got, how do we save employees that are not union, how do we save people's jobs as a total? And maybe we did lose sight of the steps and stuff, because we're more focused on just saving people, why?
Right, and that, that's.
We didn't lose, we didn't lose sight.
Right.
We didn't have the funds.
Oh, we didn't have the funds.
We did not lose sight.
And that's part of the conversation, but it also, in the same token, can't say, oh, well, you missed your step. I mean, so we, it all has to be part of the same conversation to make sure that the employees know that we understand that they didn't get something that we feel they probably should re- should be receiving, and that we would make whatever effort to make sure that we have everybody up to the same.
I am not speaking on behalf of the finance committee with this statement, I am speaking as a taxpayer. I would ask that you folks who do negotiate the contracts, take that into a ca- consideration. Because some of the raises that have been signed in on some of those contracts have been quite a, quite a bit, and it has hurt our non-union, non-contracted people. So I would ask that you folks who are involved in that, think of those things, I understand they're very important, and I'm not denying that. But sometimes we keep, we give, we give and we give and we give, and then we take and we take and we take. And these guys work very, very hard, and we don't take it lightly when we have to take it, it seems like we do, but it's not.
No, and that was, that was gonna be my comment too, was I, as a general comment, haven't been particularly impressed how we negotiate some of those. But I mean, to echo Mr. Knackioli, maybe the only time I'll do that on this board, at town meeting. The people that really do get buried are your administrative staff, that are already on the lower end of the totem pole when it comes to pay. We're not worried about the department heads, we're not worried about the union employees, I mean, if, God forbid, our administrative staff unionized, um, then then we have an issue, but it it just. It's the same people, group of people, that always gets dumped on in this process, and I understand the money is tight. Um, but I mean, can I, Lou Knackioli, he, uh, made a very chivalrous notion to let the young lady from the library board, uh, make a motion at town meeting for twenty thousand dollars to maintain certification, and I believe that if she hadn't, I mean, we would have put the money in for the colas right then, because he was gonna make that motion, so that's how tight the budget is. But we just have to, we have to come up with a way to to be better about it, whether it's through negotiating from this board or something else, because we're gonna start losing people. And there's a lot of municipal jobs open right now in surrounding communities, um, that would be, you know, really lucky to have some of the folks that we have, so.
All right, so, um, no, I think, I think we have a little bit of consensus of understanding of of where we wanna be, and I think the finance committee will 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 look at that. And we'll have Ron work closely with them to be sensitive to that, and like I said, the finance committee has always been committed to put that, um, upfront when it comes to fall meeting to try to, um, reinstate any losses and.
Can I have some more questions, Becky?
Sure.
Hey Becky, when are we looking at for, uh, free cash to be, not certified, but free cash numbers to be in general? I just like to ask that question.
Like, I knew it was coming, I knew it was coming, we're crunching the numbers now, just trying to get everything tied up, you know, it's a long process to get. See, it's all the receivables and all the last minute, because we pay bills up until June, July thirtieth. So now everything's kind of, and there's, there is still money coming in, like reimbursements and that type of stuff, that we can still accept and to balance everything out, so. Um, it's usually, I mean, we'll, we'll try to get it sooner than October, which we're usually around, but, um, I don't, I have no idea yet. But we're working on it. Um, I will also, I just, I also want to just comment, um, that I am gonna, before fall town meeting, hopefully in the next month or so, work on doing an analysis of what those, I think Leah had asked for, what those steps and colas would cost, and come up with a, an amount.
Thank you, that was gonna be, one of my other questions was even, I don't need an exact, like, hard and fast number, but at least a ballpark number. So I, I know it's not necessarily an easy, immediate to grab, especially adding in the steps and everything, so I appreciate that, though, because I think that's helpful for all of us.
But that's looking at every particular employee's position that we have, exactly, because I want us to have an actual hard plan.
Yeah.
And then if we have to work towards that plan.
Right.
We could do that, but it's a plan, it's a promise, it will help.
And, and I think I had asked to include, um, with Seth, with the on-call firefighters and everything, all kind of cap-
I, I've talked to him as well.
Capturing every, everybody in in that non-union, non-contracted, um, employee bucket, um, regardless of how they fall. And that way we get a sense for what we're looking at and what we need to work towards.
One, one question I had, I mean, was the, um, cola, I know Seth had proposed a three percent cola, we were proposing a two percent cola for the other employees. Is there any consensus on the board or feeling from of what cola I, we should estimate it at, two or three?
I would personally like to see through the chair, three. Inflation this year is gonna be at its highest level in the last fifteen years, I mean, historically, inflation's usually at lower than three percent. And this year it's just gonna be one of the worst. So I would like to see a three.
Yeah, I, I.
We can do it.
I mean, I, I agree with that, and I think that's on the low side, so I think that's a reasonable number to look at.
I mean, maybe if it's not a ton of extra work, give us the two and give us the three, I mean, you have the numbers. I don't know.
It's, it's easy to do on an Excel sheet, you, and just.
My comment here, because I'm the one that's got to deliver this decision in some respects here with the employees. When we decided all non-union employees are gonna get a two percent cola, but Seth guys are gonna get a three percent cola. All the questions come to me, they go, why does Seth people get three percent, why do we get two percent? Just want you to know that that's the dynamic among employees.
Well, that wasn't decided, because I don't think there was a known, I mean, the finance committee wasn't aware about the three percent colas for the not, the non-union buyer, right?
Well, we didn't say that, we just said three.
Correct, it comes to you, you for a decision, right.
So I don't think that we agreed to that.
Well, that's why I'm just looking to talk tonight, when we get to, you guys are gonna make a decision.
Right, and and whatever it's gonna be, it's gonna be across the board.
Well, that's why I just want to understand.
There's gonna be consistency, I don't think we're gonna have special ones for for non-union fire and special ones for.
Well, that's why I just heard the three percent, I'm saying everybody else we're talking to, I don't, I just want to understand why.
And 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 I'm sure the finance committee will review it and agree that if we're gonna, we're gonna do it, it's gonna be across the board, everybody gets the same cost.
But everyone needs to be aware that this is going to create a larger structural deficit going into next year's budget.
Right.
Uh, what do you mean, we have all that money coming in from the heights?
I'm just letting you know, it's going to the larger structural deficit.
Tim, that money's coming in from the heights, right?
That's one, I mean, it's hard to say.
I cannot answer that question.
All right, but I, I mean, at least there's a, at least there's a consensus that, you know, and and there's awareness that the finance committee and the, and the town administrator is committing to do with everything they can for the cost of living and to look at that step issue. So, uh, thank you, Tamika, for bringing the issue again to our attention, stimulating more conversation, and hopefully we'll see some more, um, definitive action on that, so. Thank you. All right, Sean Moore was next on the agenda, but I think he's gonna reschedule that.
Yes.
So we'll go right to the ZBA appointments.
Sorry, I, can, I know we have, we've already had to sign contracts and everything for this, is, can I just, it just says discussion for the contract, but.
I think he wanted to request.
Well, he, he, he wanted to, he, he requested it, he needed with us to discuss.
Oh.
Oh, ZBA.
Okay, I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, because I know the term for this expires.
No, he's, yeah, he's looking at an possible extension or something, so he wanted to to meet with the board, and he wants to reschedule that.
Okay, that's. No, that's fine, I just was curious as to like what it was pertaining, because I'm like, everything's signed, like, I didn't.
Yeah, no, I, I think it was a possible extension or consideration.
His contract, after eighteen months, if he doesn't have building permits and stuff in place, his contract automatically expires, so he's looking to extend it from that eighteen month period.
That's fine, I just was curious.
So, so we'll postpone that to another meeting.
Thank you.
So we'll go to the, uh, ZBA appointment.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah?
So, so you had a lot of discussion about this today, in preparing for the finance meeting. So, and I had most of that discussion with Richard Sarat, the chairman of the board, and also with Anita. It's a, it's now a five-member board based upon the vote you guys did last meeting, right? So when I talked to the chair, he said, oh, you know, we want to be on a three-year term, forget about staggering, but the board, as Anita explained to me, is already staggered.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're suggesting, um, a three-year term for Paul Karin and a two-year term for Arthur Wells.
Okay.
But what is also important is that generally, terms expire June thirtieth, is the expiration of terms, okay? We want the terms all to expire at the same time, is what we're trying to do. So the recommendation is that the terms would go, the two-year term would go, uh, for Arthur Wells would go from, to June thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. That's when his term would expire. And for Paul, it would be same thing, June thirty to twenty twenty-four is when his term expired. At that time, when you do the new appointment, you'll do a straight three-year appointment, but we wanna make them consistently all expire on that June thirty day. Okay, so that must have been the document that, uh, I'm being shown, uh, is an older document, not as of today's discussion.
No, that was in.
It was in your folder, but that discussion.
No, not, not in our folder, your folder. No, that's the one that you gave us for signature.
Yeah. Oh, so, so this has not been updated, because I had this conversation with Anita today. So this is incorrect, this should be, uh, a three-year term and a two-year term. The, again, the two-year term expiring twenty twenty, June thirty to twenty twenty-three, and the three-year term expiring June twenty twenty-four, that was my discussion with Anita today.
Okay.
That's, yeah, that's not accurate there, yeah. And and Richard said that he wanted Paul to have the three-year term and Arthur to have the two-year term.
So that, that form will just need to be updated.
That form needs to be updated with the date, yeah, just to be clear what the terms is. Do you want me to restate those terms, so it's all clear, or is everybody?
I have.
Enough.
I'll, I'll make a motion to appoint, um, Arthur Wells to ZBA for a two-year term, expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And Paul, is it Karin?
I guess it's.
Um, to the ZBA for a three-year appointment, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Do we have a second?
Second it.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call?
Vargai.
Benoidai.
Let's see your cues.
Whiteman eye.
And nickel's eye. All right. All right, save the best for almost last, thank you for waiting for us, Karen.
There's a reason I'm here.
Yes, and and welcome aboard, we appreciate you taking on as our veteran agent. And you have a proposal for the Purple Heart signs, uh, to be gifted to the town.
Yes, now, in addition, not that I, um, planned on taking care of it. But in having a discussion with someone, they mentioned about the parking, there's some, you go to some communities, they have the Purple Hat, um, combat wound-in-parking signs. So I've got quotes on that, if that wants to be taken up elsewhere, I've got the prices, I can present it to anybody. Um, this has been an ongoing process since prior to the COVID, that the suggestion was brought up. So I was pleased when I saw that the select board had, um, done the proclamation for August sixth, being the, um, date, the, um, Purple Hat date. So I am coming forward because I am willing to take care of the cost of the signs, the Purple House, Purple Hot Signs, that will go to all the entrances. Um, I've had discussions with Becky, who has spoken with, um, Dan, there's been a few emails on how that should be approached. You know, um, is it a one-time deal, does a actual separate gift account have to be set up? And then I've got the company who's ready to go up in Leominster to do the signs, I've got somebody to pick them up, I've got somebody to install them. So you're just here to say, yes, Karen, go ahead, we'll accept your gift. And the amount would be, um, and doing it this way saves, um, sales tax. That if I did it as an individual, so, I mean, there's a, there's a reason why. And it would be for nine signs, now, I'm not sure if it's nine or eight, um, that can be researched. My thoughts is I went around in my brain to each geographical entrance into Rutland, and I know there's the one at the bottom of one twenty-two, um, A.
Eight.
But is there one in Oakville?
There's one down that way, yes.
So that's the ninth one that it's separate, not on an entrance, okay. So nine signs is six hundred fifty-seven dollars and eight cents. So I would like to gift that to the town and proceed, um, to have them installed, and my thoughts would be, in the meantime, I'll present the three parking spots. Somebody could probably come up with the money, it's, um, a hundred fifty-four dollars. And it'd be nice to have it all done, and possibly, these are my thoughts, and this is my brain thinking as a veteran agent or organizer of many, many events over the years. And it'd be nice to have it all done, and possibly, these are my thoughts, and this is my brain thinking as a veteran's agent or organizer of many, many events over the years. It'd be nice to have it all done in place and maybe do something for, and I, I talked to Ron about this, for Veterans Day, if you pick one sign that, you know, a lot of people could come to, and we should get the publicity out on who in town are purple hat recipients, I don't think there's an actual um, list, I don't think the Legion has a complete list, but there's probably a way we can reach out and then invite those people. So those are my thoughts, but we're really here to just, uh, come up with that amount and.
Right, now, was it Dan's, um, determination that you'd put it in a gift account, and that's how it would be?
Well, Becky and Dan, as of like the other day, were still discussing it, so, um, I think accepting it, I don't know if I have to accept it,
Okay. So they'll figure out the details, yep.
and how even accepted, does it have to go here or there, but it's some sort of gift account, might be a one-time.
Yeah. Okay.
Jack and Mont shaking, he said yes, like, so it makes sense.
Yep. I got a couple comments, but I didn't, it's not first, I don't wanna interfere with any.
I was gonna make a motion.
Um, okay, so let me, a comment before, it doesn't matter, before or after. So, so this is an interesting discussion, first of all, Karen came to me well before I was even applied for the veterans agent job, to ask me about this, and obviously, we didn't have many money in the budget for this, and I said to Karen, you know, if you can raise the money, I'm sure we'd be all supportive of this, and you guys did the proclamation, making it uh, Purple Heart community, um, but I, you know, Karen, I thought was gonna go out and raise the money, so I, I first, I can't begin to thank you enough, because it sounds like you're taking it out of your own pocket, which is just extraordinary for you to do this, and it shows your appreciation for the men and women who have served this country.
My whole career has been helping veterans, so.
Yeah, it's just, just amazing, and, and, you know, I know we, we work together, Joe Buckley's gonna make sure we install all the signs and we have the posts, so we're trying to do as much as we could to keep the costs low. Um, and, and I know I, I sent you an email, I was, I was really excited when Karen decided to take the veterans job. Um, and, and I wanna compliment her on that too, she's got just eons of experience in the city, both in Worcester and other places, and uh, we are extremely lucky that she's coming into a, where it's really a small part-time job, but not a lot of money in it.
Oh. Mitch, Mitch knows what I do with the city, I'll mind numbers where the economic.
Karen, oh Karen, I forgot, no, I'm just kidding, we work together in Worcester.
Yeah. I know, but the dedication involved in this, this job is, in, in terms of salary and everything else, is like, we, we pay nothing. And to have somebody of this stature who has this kind of experience to take this position is, is unbelievably a great asset for the towns. Karen, thank you for what you're doing with the signs, but I more thank you for agreeing to be our veterans agent, I think you'd be a tremendous asset, and I think that this board is gonna, gonna have a lot of praises as you, you serve, because it's been, you know, difficult, you know, six months I've been here on, on some issues, and I think you're gonna go to make this a lot better, so I wanted to thank you, and it, it means a lot to me what you've done and how you're dealing with this, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll go ahead, excuse me, make a motion, uh, to accept a gift of nine signs, uh, totaling a value of six hundred fifty-seven dollars and eight cents uh, for a Purple Heart commemorative signage.
Okay.
Any dis, uh, discussion?
One other comment, would you give me your email account, we got a new town email, so if you have any veterans issues, if you have sisters come with you
Yeah.
for veteran stuff, please, she's got a new town email account.
Yeah, I can figure out access it, I tried to do it today, and I messed up the password or something. Was that Paul, that was he who did?
Yeah, it was, what, do you remember the name of the account?
I'm gonna introduce myself, um.
Email, it's something I'd kinda run with that already.
That, I think it's that agent, or whatever it is, I don't remember.
I, I'll send you it out too, but she's got her own new email.
And then phone number wise, um, we're gonna use the, um, town administrator's office, um,
Yeah.
Beth's extension. So I'm not getting calls at all.
Now, you, you didn't want the parking as part of the motion, right Karen, is that, it's gonna be like.
No, no, I'm bringing that up and I'll, that, that somebody, and they can run with it.
Okay, that'll be a different issue, okay.
And.
Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say the parking, I know Holden has it at their senior center, they have like, um, designated purple painted spots with designated parking.
The sign, it's similar to the sign you've probably got the picture of, and the thoughts were, um, right behind the annex, the first, these are my thoughts, I'm not making the decision, but the, the, kind of say a lot about things. The spot right behind the annex, uh, the senior center, and possibly the library, those are my thoughts on the three.
All right, all right, so, uh, any other comments? All right, so if we can roll call vote?
Clock eye.
Benoid eye.
Which city, I.
Whitman eye.
And Nichols eye with much, much appreciation.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you very much, thank you for waiting, I'm sorry. That's for last, right?
Yeah, you got out of that one, yeah.
All right, we did have, um, when we had our roundtable and we were looking at our goals and objectives, we had decided we were gonna put, list them at the end of our agendas for any, um, possible discussion, and I know we had probably like five different goals and objectives. Right now, we just have the economic development plan and the upgrade on the town website, I know that Ron had some comment, I think, did you already make a comment, do you have any other?
Yeah, just, you know, we're waiting, I guess, to see who's applied already, we put it on the website, we put it on the Facebook page, and again, if you guys have members, but we still wanna encourage any citizen who's interested in serving in the economic development region to bring their names forward, but I have not looked at, since I came back just today, if we've got any applications or not yet.
And there was a, a lot of dis, discussion about economic development at the ag commission as well as when, um, Carol and I met with the planner and, and the building inspector, so we, we told them to spread the word as well, if, if they, you know, people that might be interested in. And as far as the upgrades to the website, I know you did the fillable form, is there any other?
Well, we, we met the once, um, there's about five or six of us meeting, and Anita and Damian, I believe, I think with some help from Tamika, have gone through all of the pages to see what departments and chairs and committees and all that have severely out-of-date information or newer information. In some cases, they've reached out to them, they're getting, um, information back from them and, uh, filling in that. Um, and the other big thing is, is that I'm personally going to be going through in any forms that are typically just printed either on somebody's personal computer and filled out and scanned or brought back or mailed. Um, we've got our first one as a fillable PDF online, and I'll be going through and doing the rest of them, because I love.
Teach me how to do it.
It's crazy.
Can I ask a question for that, can, there be for public comment, um, can you do a form for that, because I had feedback that a few people had some public comment um, that they weren't, they missed, because I think they had submitted something and it wasn't in time, and even though it was
Sure.
public comment, and so, I don't know, I think that's something we might need to look at, efficient ways to do public comment, but if it can be an online fillable form that then is monitored, and if it's public comments, I think it doesn't need to meet the forty-eight hours before, if it's a public, I'm, I'm not sure, but.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm just gonna go through the website and, as anything pops up, so if anybody has any priorities that we can put up to the top, I will do that. But the other point of doing that is not only to make it maybe more twentieth century, not even twenty-first century, um, but the other is, I think that we'll have more people getting involved, if they don't think that they have to come up during business hours to get a form, or submit a form, or mail it, so I think that's it, um, and the other, Cindy Purcell is on the, uh, committee, and we're gonna be heavy, relying heavily on her for ADA compliance for the website, so.
Thank you.
Now, I know, when we did our goals and objectives, I think I had five, so these two we had talked about definitely, I know we got underway, uh, the other thing was boards and commissions, was that like?
I think that that was a little bit what we talked about with, working with the library, and I mean, just.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll keep that at the, on the agendas for intent date.
And I think it was to, and I think it was getting them updated, which is on the website side, getting everything current and mission and objectives or whatever, as well as spreading the word as far as.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Their, what they do.
And then human resources, I know Ron was talking about goals and objectives for staff, and we got into the matrix and stuff like that, so we'll keep that on, we'll add that in case, for updates. Um, and then the, uh, an, annual rev, in, review of the annual budget and financial futures, so, um, Carol and I had, uh, met with Dan and, and asked for some information, so I think we should start working a little bit on, on doing that, so the board can look, you know, productively ahead, um, in working with the finance committee, looking at current financials and
Yeah, thank you, I definitely wanna.
being a little bit more pre, more prepared for the, the budget season early on.
Yeah, and make sure that we're working with FinCom, but, and not solely this budget year, but also, I mean, this budget year is important, but.
Right. Looking at past, historic and going forward, yeah.
Historic and what the future is looking like.
So we'll, we'll, we'll add the rest on, keep those goals, like I said, on the agenda, just in case there are any comments or updates.
Thank you.
All right, does anybody have anything else, or do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Whitman seconds.
All, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you all, appreciate it, sorry about the.